Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting and immediately thereafter, the committee of the whole meeting. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowery?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kassarog?
Here.
Malaki?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and it's my honor to invite two gentlemen who we will all meet momentarily, Jake Van Bogart and Dan Javid, to please lead us in the pledge. Thank you, gentlemen. Our first item of business, item 3A, is to proclaim March as Women's History Month in the city of Geneva. Is there such a motion? Motion by Pashki, seconded by Bowery? All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Item 3B is to introduce Superintendent of Streets and Fleet, Dan Javid. Dan, welcome. Come on up to the podium there, big guy. We're gonna introduce you to the community. You've been on board now three months. Two months.
About two months.
How many?
About two months.
Two months. Excuse me, I wrote that down wrong. Two months. We're delighted you're here, and you helped create this cheat sheet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It says here, folks, that Dan loves to cook and grill. What's your, what's your magic recipe? On cooking?
On cooking, um, a chicken shawarma with a yogurt sauce.
Any available this evening?
Takes a little while to make.
Are you a trained chef as well?
No.
Just picked it up and the love of it.
Yeah, when you enjoy doing something, it's just something you do more.
Wow. And grilling?
Yeah, typically, my favorite is 4th of July. We do a cookout, so we have brats, burgers, steaks, chicken. What did, unique things that, that people like when they come over is a chicken teriyaki with pineapple and provolone cheese. That's a big hit with people.
Are, are, are all your friends in the intensive care unit? Now, this, this blends nicely into item 2. And this is your words. These are your words. I am godfather to ten kids.
Yeah, I think about six of those are under the age of eighteen now, so they're, they're growing up.
Do they come to your barbecues?
Yes.
Do they really?
Yes.
My goodness. Spent many years at AT&amp;T before moving to the public sector in 2019. Where were you with AT&amp;T?
I moved around quite a bit in AT&amp;T. I started out in Arlington Heights.
Sure.
Went to Hoffman Estates and ended, um, before I went into the public sector in Lombard. Number of different departments there, doing some technical work and then some management work.
No kidding. And AT&amp;T is still around?
Yes.
Graduated from beautiful Benedictine University with a BA in organizational leadership, as well as an MBA with concentration in organizational leadership. The MBA is also from Benedictine?
Correct.
It is. Did you just move from one to the other?
Yes, right after I finished my BA, um, they were offering a course for the MBA and I just went right into it.
Well, that's cool.
Yeah, it was, it was actually interesting because my brother was talking for years about taking, going for his MBA, so it was kind of my way of talking him into going, so we actually went to, through the program together.
Oh, my gosh. You know, uh, earlier this morning, I reached out to Public Works to inquire about some celebratory signage. And I think I inadvertently reached out to your predecessor, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
So if you could, please share with everybody your cellphone.
I don't, I'm just kidding. I don't have it memorized yet.
So, Dan, what else should we know about you?
How much time you have?
All night.
Um, so I think the most important thing, I, I, I love learning. That's one of the things that, that brought me here. I think it's taken me very far in life and, uh, I also like, the other half of learning is teaching, so, um, helping people, uh, coaching people up and seeing, seeing people succeed really is, is what drives me, which is, you know, why I like the, the position I'm in right now.
Sure, sure. And forgive me for not, if I, if I failed to see this, I apologize, but just prior to joining us, where were you?
I was at the city of Marengo.
Marengo?
Yes.
Holy moly. Do they still have that volleyball court right off that tight turn over there in Marengo? Right off of, I think it's twenty?
I don't know if there's a volleyball court over there. I, I never saw it over there.
Well, that's good. Way to pay attention, Dan. That's good.
I was watching the roads.
Yeah, smart move. It's a hell of an intersection, man. It's like, it's brutal. We're delighted you're on board.
Thanks for having me.
And you survived the winter months? Fingers crossed, not much more to go?
We're hoping.
Yeah, we're hoping is right. Open to the dais, if anyone has any comments or questions for our good friend Dan?
Thank you.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Now invite your, invite your colleague up here. This is Jake Van Bogart. Jake, how are you?
I'm doing good. How about you?
Good. Street maintenance worker.
Yes, sir.
Life is good. Check this out, ladies and gentlemen. Military service, National Guard, has served two years of a six-year contract in Military Occupational Specialty, or MOS, as a combat engineer. And I just learned this evening that in mid-July, you are being deployed to Puerto Rico to help with the ongoing recovery efforts. And that's a two-week stint?
Two weeks.
Unbelievable, isn't it? Have you been to Puerto Rico?
Never been. It's gonna be another one to check off.
Indeed it is. Sunscreen?
We'll see if they provide it.
We'll take up a collection if you need it. Your hobby is motorcycles. Fixing and riding, or just riding?
Oh, no. I pay someone to fix them.
Yeah?
I don't got the time for that.
Do, do you own one, I trust?
Yeah, I do own one.
What do you ride?
I have a 2024 Triumph Street Triple.
Oh, yeah, those are great.
It's been, been good so far.
Pardon me?
It's been good so far.
Has it been good so far?
We'll see how long it lasts.
And you wear a helmet?
All the time.
All the time.
Can't let someone see this face.
Yeah. You and I were cabressing earlier that there's a motorcycle museum opening up in St. Charles.
Pretty excited about that.
It is pretty cool. Just on, on East Main Street, the old Cork and Fork. No, is it Cork and Fork? Yeah, I think it's the old Cork. Yeah, right next to Dipple Donuts. Yeah, check it out, man. So when you, uh, when you're killing time, what do you do for fun?
If it's winter, usually sleep. Gotta, gotta catch up on that, 'cause during the summer, it's motorcycles all night. You gotta get it while you can in the Midwest.
Just real quick here, Jake, define all night.
I don't think I should.
Uh, now, obviously, I know that you are a very careful motorcyclist.
All the time.
But clearly, or at least I would assume, you had that baby up to some serious speed.
I plead the fifth.
Well done. Good timing. No city attorney here this evening either, so, well done. Oh, that's right, the screen. Mr. Sandek, any comments?
Uh, he took the fifth, so he's in both his rights.
You've lived in the area for fifteen years.
Yes.
May I ask where you went to high school?
Went to high school in Caneeland, so I've been in Elburn for about twelve years, and prior to that, it was Sycamore for a handful of years.
No, yeah, Sycamore is beautiful too, isn't it?
Uh, it's too close to DeKalb for my liking.
Make sure we edit the tape? You're a Caneeland Knight, though?
Yes.
Graduated Caneeland High School.
All four years, went there, graduated, yep.
Life is good. Did you know you always wanted to have a role in the military?
That was somewhat of an impulsive decision that ended up working out, so.
Yeah?
They contacted me one week and pretty much the next I was in, so.
And you trained at?
Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, for the winter cycle. Thank the Lord that I never have to do that again. It was, uh, fifteen, yeah, fifteen weeks, and there was snow on the ground the entire time, so.
You have a family in Public Works?
I've got Phil Van Bogart over at Elburn Public Works. I believe he's the director, and then Matthew Wilson over in St. Charles.
And Phil is, how is Phil related to you?
He's a uncle.
And you're close, 'cause you have no idea what his title is?
Well, I see him occasionally, I mean. Family events.
Family, I understand. Cookouts.
Yeah.
Or a dance place. So why, uh, why, why Public Works for you?
Heard they got great benefits, uh, and taxpayers are already paying my military salary, why not my other one?
Well, that's, that's, again, edit the tape, so we can what else do we know about you, Jake?
Um, probably one of the youngest ones working for the city, and I look forward to a bright future with you guys. That's about it.
You're probably one of the youngest ones, aren't you?
Yeah, twenty years old.
Well, see, I didn't ask, she's twenty years. When's your birthday?
Uh, September.
Holy moly. Anyone on the dais remember twenty years old? No, okay. Wow. Well, we're proud of you, and we're grateful that you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. And everyone say hello to Jake and to our friend Dan when you're out and about, 'cause they are always out and about. So thank you for joining Team Geneva. We appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. And gentlemen, you're free to leave if you so choose. Thank you. If you decide to stay, we'll question you. Item four, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items on this agenda marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and all those items can be considered in one motion. Is there such a motion? Motion by Kassarog, seconded by Pashki. City clerk will kindly take the roll.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
With ten votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and zero alderpersons absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to item eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our distinguished city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total one million, five hundred, seven thousand, three hundred, fifty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet and on the city website.
I'm sorry, nobody can hear you. Can you move that closer?
I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet and on the city website.
Alderperson Bruno has made a motion to approve the bills as presented, which are available in each council member's packet and available on the city's website. Is there a second to that motion? Kassarog gets the second. Any questions? None? City clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
The bills have been approved for payment with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero alderpersons absent. We jump to item ten. Presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Item 10A is considered Resolution 2025-20 through 2025-24, authorizing the use of public right-of-way and city services, and approving the Illinois Department of Transportation Resolutions of closures for traffic lanes for the 2025 festival and large-scale events. Motion by Bowery, seconded by Pashki. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so annually, the city council reviews a list of reoccurring events and authorizes the city administrator to approve details of the special event application in keeping with prior approval provisions. This process offers more discretion for event logistics, provides event organizers with more fluidity to finalize details, and reduces administrative tasks associated with the event review management. Also included in the packet and as stated in the motion are the IDOT resolutions that are required when event routes necessitate the closure of state highways. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions for city administrator Dawkins? Alderperson Ruby?
Thank you. Is there a, a list of events that are in the resolution in the packet? Can, can you just Yeah, I don't. run through them, or?
Give you one second so that I don't skip one? Sorry about that.
Thank you. It's mine. So you have the Memorial Day Parade, the Swedish Days Parade, Geneva Arts Fair, Concorde Elegance, Festival of the Vine, the Fox Valley Marathon, Geneva High School Homecoming Parade, and the Christmas Walk. Thank you.
Questions for the city administrator? If not, we have a motion. We have a second. City clerk, please take the roll call.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Resolutions 2025-20 through 2025-24 have been approved by this council with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero alderpersons absent. Item 10B is to consider Resolution 2025-25 declaring fire department equipment as surplus property. Is there a motion? Motion by Pashki?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so again, the resolution for your consideration is to declare surplus the fire department equipment that is listed on the exhibit to the resolution in the agenda packet. The equipment is obsolete, at end of life, broken, and/or otherwise not usable. Upon declaration of surplus, the property shall be sold or otherwise appropriately disposed. And if you have any specific questions, we do have Chief Antonori with us this evening.
Any questions on the dais for the chief? Seeing none, sensing none, hearing none, roll call, madam clerk.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero alderpersons absent. We jump to item 11, which is public comment. Public comment is for the benefit of those joining us this evening. It is your chance to speak, our chance to listen. There is no sign-up sheet per se, but we traditionally begin at the south side of the room, so anyone wishing to share their opinions with the city council, the floor is yours. Nobody on the south side? North side. Mr. Porter, welcome.
Sorry about that, working with a bum wheel. All right, I'm gonna set this here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I received a very public invitation from you, Mr. Mayor, last week on Facebook. Uh, about sixty days ago, I was at a meeting here, and I left with more questions than I had answers, so, um, it was really a cool oppor, opportunity to start to understand things and learn how the city works and the inner workings. I hear all the time, it's all on the website, come to a meeting, sign up for alerts. There, there is a lot of information on all of those, but there's also a lot more information that goes on behind the scenes, and it was interesting to discover. So I'm gonna focus tonight on a couple of issues, three of them, to try to be very concise and use the least amount of your time. There's been some very public statements by the mayor that indicate that the council unanimously directed him to take some actions in writing a letter. All of the information we have contradicts that, and I'm gonna go through a couple of those pieces, and I'm gonna do the best I can to just read the emails, 'cause then there's no opinions, as little as possible. The second is if, if there was not an open meetings violation act, because it was not on the agenda on the March 18th meeting, nor on the April 1st, nor is it in the, the meeting minutes, and emails indicate this letter was sent to you all on April 10th by Ms., or, I'm sorry, actually, the letter on April 10th was a zoning letter by Mr. DeGroot. Or, nope, correction, was Mr. Burns' letter was sent to you all with, uh, the advice that if you wanted to send your own letters and additional support, that you could use this as an example. The third issue is that I think you guys have a no-win job in a lot of cases. You hear from a lot of people on both sides of issues. This isn't really about any specific project or any specific, uh, thing. It's really about the process and what I believe that the citizens of Geneva deserve, which is full transparency. That's made even more complicated for you guys if people are withholding information from you that you rely on to present you with the facts fairly and to hold open hearings in a fair fashion. So we're gonna talk about one of those issues. So, uh, the statements sta, uh, that the mayor made is, uh, "The Burton Foundation closed on the property formerly known as Duke &amp; Lees in November 2024. To date, there has been zero plans submitted to the city of Geneva to develop the site into affordable housing." Um, that is factually incorrect. I could forward you the extensive plans sent an email, but they're your emails. You guys already have them, so somebody from the city can send you those. There are two different sets of plans, one for a 54-unit drawing, uh, concept that's been through some initial, uh, preliminary work with Mr. DeGroot, and now a newer one for a 35-unit building. So there are extensive plans. They are stamped. They are, the plans are owned by the Burton Foundation. Uh, they were drawn up, and, uh, it was abundantly clear in all of the emails that it was for affordable housing. The second statement is that the letter issued to the IHDA was, I'll read this. "Signed on letterhead with the entire city council listed. Reflects the unanimous support of the city council and its direction to me to send the letter to IHDA expressing the continued support for affordable housing opportunities in Geneva." Uh, he goes on to then describe it as almost perfunctory. Again, looking at the meeting minutes, I do not see any direction from the city council. I do not see any authority granted to do this. This letter is not perfunctory. This letter is part of a process that developers use to compete for credits. This letter gives them, uh, preferential points along with things like donation of the land and additional funding. So, again, it looks from the emails, assuming that they were all provided, and we have not been provided with every bit we asked for that was not rejected. We've not been provided with several key attachments that we're still working on. They were not, um, refused, but they were not provided in the emails, so we're still working through that. On March 20th, the Burton Foundation requested letters from David DeGroot. They sent two draft copies of letters asking for them to be put on city letterhead and forwarded to IHDA. Those draft letters have been redacted. They were forwarded to the mayor and, I believe, to Ms. Dawkins. Uh, later that afternoon, Mr. Burns asks, uh, for, uh, Mr. DeGroot to call him. On that very same day, the 54-unit plans were sent for Mr. DeGroot to review. They were also forwarded to the mayor in that email. So that was the afternoon of the 20th of March. On the 25th, Ms. Dawkins emails to the entire city council and the mayor. "Good afternoon. The Burton Foundation has submitted a project in Geneva to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for consideration in this year's allotment of housing tax credits. The project, Tartesso, is proposed to be a 54-unit, age-restricted, mixed-use building located at 609 South Third, formerly Duke &amp; Lees. Attached is the zoning letter that was sent to IDHA at the request of the Burton Foundation. Please note, the city has not received a formal submittal information to determine the project, just enough information to determine the project complies with the zoning district. Any submittal will require further review and recommendation, recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to being considered for full approval by the city council. At this time, this is all the information we have. Determination of funding by IDHA, IDHA is not expected until June. If and when a formal submission, uh, will be, is a, a formal submission, I'm sorry, it's a little bit cut off on the right side of the page. It will be posted to the city's website on the development page. That letter was the first draft that Mr. DeGroot sent. Later that week, uh, in fact, two days later, I believe, Ms. Manning sends back a letter to Mr. DeGroot asking him to, that she has received feedback from IDHA, asking him to amend the letter. He fully complies with Ms. Manning's request and changes bullet number three on the letter. In bullet number three, he lays out a very sophisticated process, and it'll be a little bit too small for me to read it verbatim, but I will tell you exactly what it says, and again, I can give you the emails, but they're in your system. Uh, in that process, he lays out that there were approved plans for the site, so it will go back for a plan-site review. As part of that, there will be public hearings. However, there will not be an opportunity to cross-examine the developer, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment until after the, the, the plans have been approved by the city council. That is a very specific process, and there is a very specific reason for that. The reason for that is because they need public comment as part of their scouring, and Mr. DeGroot was explaining why there would be no public comment in Ms., uh, Manning's submission. So that is the second draft of the letter. Again, I can provide both of those letters. Moving on. On 410, that, uh, the letter was forwarded to you that Mr. Burns wrote. The letter that I say is in question as to whether or not there was the full consent, unanimous consent and direction by the council, and whether this was done in a meeting or not, because if it was done in a meeting, there should be notes. It doesn't appear that there was, especially since there are individual replies, uh, and, and, um, the reply from Ms. Bowery, I apologize if I got that wrong, uh, to Ms. Dawkins, is, does this help? Ms. Dawkins explains that, uh, she's never seen one of these before, so I'm not sure how perfunctory that letter is. She's never seen one of these before. She thinks it probably does. Um, again, those are in the emails. Moving forward to May 17th, Mr. DeGroot, uh, I'm sorry, that's when Mr. DeGroot writes the second letter, is, is May 17th, where he amends number three on the process. As it's getting close, uh, Ms. Manning has already received some preliminary feedback that their funding is good and needs the letter amended. So on May 17th, the second letter was written to the IHDA where item number three was changed, and the process specifically states no changes. Now I'm gonna move to June 3rd, 'cause this is where we go from questionable to I find disturbing. Sorry to opine. On June 3rd, Mr. DeGroot writes an email to Ms. Dawkins and Mayor Burns. Subject 609 Third Street. Good morning. Two quick updates on the site. Number one, Colin is reaching out to the property owner regarding the dead trees to, and having it removed. Number two, the Burton Foundation was not successful in their first application for tax credits. They're revising the plans to reduce the commercial space and find other opportunities to reduce costs. They will need to resubmit their application for consideration again next year. My understanding is that the site is tied up until October, and that the Burton Foundation is trying to get an extension for another year. I think it is probably best to hold off on updating the full council until we know if they're able to get the extension. On October 7th, I watched the meeting twice yesterday. On October 7th, there was a hearing held to extend Mr. Crespo's plans. Mr. Crespo's agent stood here and explained to you how the buyer, who's, who you guys were only made aware of by the, the letter Mr. Burns sent, as to who that would have been, uh, outside of any private conversations. He stood here and explained to you that the, you guys deliberated very hard over whether you should extend these plans, and it's not about the plans. It was about the zoning. If the plans expired, you would have to go through a full hearing and start all, all over again with all the public hearing and all the mess that comes with it. You guys, you guys were, he was allowed to stand here and say that the, the buyer, or potential buyer, whom he would not disclose. One of you actually asked him directly or said, is it the same buyer from two years ago, and there was a back and forth. He was allowed to stand here and say that this was ready to close and that this would be the fastest way to get this project done. And you guys, after some debate, went ahead and approved those plans. While you were debating over that, Mr. DeGroot, Ms. Dawkins, and Mr. Burns knew that they did not have the funding. They closed on the property. She still does not have the funding. The Burton Foundation does not have the funding for the project as it sits today, and the allotment of, of funds wouldn't even come until June of 2025 to be able to finance the building. Mr. DeGroot lays out a 90-day process. At best, you're gonna be right up Mister DeGroot lays out a ninety-day process. At best, you're gonna be right up against the expiration of those plans again in September before you could get permits pulled. And do all this. So you'll have to do all of this again. Mister Kilburg actually o- offered a two-year extension in that meeting to the the developer. And he said he wouldn't take it basically. Um and it and it went down for lack of a second. But that whole sheer, that whole hearing. You were allowed, you were, there was information withheld from you, the man was allowed to testify with knowing. Knowing that the financing wasn't available for the project. I don't know what the opportunities are for for the council to take and what uh what. You guys can do about it. I know you have a hard job. It's made even harder when you have staff doing things to withhold information from you. In their own words. Maybe they told you, but it doesn't look like it from the emails because the email trail stops there. That uh Ms. Manning was going to be at that meeting. But after a conversation uh uh after an exchange where Mister DeGroot told her, people are gonna have questions on why we're extending this site with this plans. She decided they should get on the phone. She got on the phone and it was only Crespo's person who spoke. So. Something's going on. It is about the process, not the project. Everybody gets, everybody should get their say on any project in town. That's what this is all supposed to be about. You guys took an oath of office to the city, to the citizens, not to any one individual or not to your own agendas. And I'm asking that you look into the situation. I'm happy to provide you these emails. Again, they're in your email system. You guys can look them up. But I'd be happy to provide them if nobody else will. I'm also asking. That you do what you can to support myself and the uh four or five other citizens who are asking questions and trying to get these attachments and FOIAs fulfilled. Again, they're not being rejected. They're just not being fulfilled. I'm asking that you give us those draft letters that the Burton Foundation. Asked Mister DeGroot to have put on the city letterhead that appear to have been dutifully done. Thank you. Mark Porter, seven forty-seven Cheever. Anyone else? Yes.
We're gonna tag team you tonight, Kevin.
Welcome.
Just wanted to uh, one, thank you very much for uh passing the uh preliminaries so that we can do our p- parades. Uh and close the streets. Uh we we thank you on that. Um that part was real easy for you. Now comes the hard work. For both the chamber and the uh city employees that have to implement all the work that needs to be done on that. Um it is with uh second, it's with great pleasure that I want to introduce to you. Uh Janine McMillan. She is the most recent uh joinee to the board for the Geneva Chamber of Commerce and I let Janine. Fill you in a little bit about herself.
Uh good evening, everyone. Um I'm Janine McMillan and I'm a proud Geneva resident since two thousand eight. Uh my husband and I affectionately call Geneva our adopted hometown. We're both from towns um further south in Illinois. Um we raised three children here. Um purchased our first home in two thousand eight, still in the same home. And uh we're really excited to continue to be a part of this community. Um in twenty twelve, my husband and I joined the Geneva Natural Resources Committee. And at a very early age, both of my children were cutting buckthorn along the Fox River and um helping to set up for wine, cheese and trees. Uh since then, I've also served on the city's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force and that was truly an honor as well. Uh so now in this most um recent uh participation in uh the city life. Um I'm working with the Geneva Chamber of Commerce on their board and representing Wabonzi Community College. Um so there I've served as an administrator since twenty twenty-two. Um Assistant Dean for Business Technology and Workforce Education and most recently. Assistant Dean for two divisions, Industry and Technology and Business and Social Sciences. So I'm really happy to be here and um continue to do the work. Thank you.
And uh it it's it's Doctor McMillan, so don't be shy.
Friends call me Janine, but thank you. Thank you, Mayor Burns.
Very, very impressed and we're delighted to have, of course, to see you again. Congratulations on your new assignment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Paul is gonna fill you on upcoming events.
Excellent.
Just a couple of things that are going, Paula Schmidt, uh Geneva Chamber. Um couple of things, we just got done with our new member reception. That was last week. We had uh ninety new members last year and we had thirty-seven come to this event. On last Thursday night. Uh it was very exciting. We had the public out there talking to all these new members. So we hope to see you there in another six months when we do this again. Um we have coming up. Our golf outing, which is going to be a little bit later this year, uh July fourteenth and we're going back to Eagle Brook. So anyone who likes to golf, Mister Kilburg, um we would love to have you there. And our coffee crawl, um tickets just went on sale today and that is on April nineteenth. So we have thirty vendors in the area who will be serving coffee delights. And we'll have about three hundred uh people that day for uh ticket sales. So we hope to see you down there. If you need a ticket and you really like coffee. Shaking, I can feel it now. Um come on down and grab a ticket. So if they have any other questions, that's what's going on down at the chamber right now. And we love Doctor McMillan. We're so excited to have her on the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Um a little bit is gonna be, this is coming from my heart. Uh it's taken me a few months to really get to this point. Um I'm gonna talk a little bit about myself, my experience. A lot of it's about community relations and engagement. As well as some issues that we've had and uh the hope for, you know, changes. My name is Jim Pamello and I'm a resident of Geneva since twenty ten. My wife and I have enjoyed this town very much over the years. Having raised two sons who are now off to the next stage of good life, as well as a sixth grade daughter. I've enjoyed the opportunity coaching many varsity athletes at Geneva High School over the years since we've moved here. As well as growing the sport of lacrosse in the larger part of Chicagoland with the youth. Personally, I've been in a real estate development professional for over fifteen years. Prior to that, a civil engineer. Um and I've been in the energy and clean fuel space, citing and developing projects which range from twenty-five million to one point one billion. Across the US. I was a civil engineer prior and have worked on many local projects like Goodwill Stores, Blackberry Creek, Automotive. Schools and more. During my time in development, I've had the opportunity to get to know many communities, both locally in the community, staff level. Local leader level, as well as many state-level and federal politicians like governors, congressmen, state reps and senators. I've had the chance to serve communities in Santi County, serving on Energy and Water Committees, as well as California Water Use Association. And at present, finally supporting our community at the county commission level. And as you can tell, California Energy Water is a very. Big subject, so I I see a lot of help. And hey, I have fun doing it. Over the years of development, transparency with the community and leaders were always the most crucial. But through that time of getting to know the communities, I was able to not only build great relationships across the US, but also see our city. How city, county and state governments work. Only one time did I see the anomaly, which was in Watertown Township Sandusky, Michigan. Where it was really hand-lished by one major family where they call the shots and if they don't see the benefit or other. You are not welcome and their local leaders filed suit. Over the past three to five months, once I started learning about the referendum, digging deeper under the face of Geneva. And more, I have found that other one anomaly. And it's unfortunate that as of late. That a few projects that have been in motion, like the police station, have popped up and concerned discussion in many discussions. I'm not saying I'm not for. But I'm all part part of planning and proper engagement and other with the communities. The community is alarmed that they are learning through discussion after an event such as a referendum, small thing, decision and more. This includes myself. Two weeks ago, I had the, they had the chance to take my first visit to Emma's Landing subdivision. I've had the pleasure of meeting some of the, some of the nice people within that community. But also questionable. Having also supporting, and this is something I do very quietly to the side, because I wanna be cautious for my family. I deal with an organization, work with an organization and help them out that battles human trafficking along the border of Mexico. I've been to it many times. I've seen a lot and I've been in a lot of different communities. I see some questionable activities in at Emma's Landing as well. I'm not saying that there is trafficking, but I see the worry of what is future crime. And I think we know there has been a lot. With the development also not in compliance, both physically seeing it in person. Arrest of convicts who should have been vetted, articles on murder, domestic violence and more. This is alarming to both the residents in Emma's Landing, the good people that should be there. And outside that don't feel safe. And why I say those that should be there is talking to them, but also talking to someone that does go visit a friend. Who does go visit, you know, and help her out and that person not feeling safe at her bedroom wall to what's going on on the other side. That's not a good sign. To learn within the past month that the same foundation in November bought or closed the iconic property, I think this gentleman uh talked about that. At the at the start of the historic Third War is alarming. And to know that they had an option or other purchase or sale agreement in place long before is alarming. Especially when the city knows the neighborhoods around the Emma's Landing and distance re- residents are scared of what's happened over the past two years. To see and hear firsthand that our staff and leader for for Geneva, knowing since long ago. About development number two and helping that same non-compliant developer foundation proceed quickly through development is sick to hear. I find it very odd and coincidental that the city extended a soon-to-be-expired permit of the property one month before land acquisition. That stuff that happens behind the scenes is well thought out. And trust me, I've seen it. Deceiving the community that this development is way early, but also stating communication to the community is rock solid strong, as strongest it's ever been. Is the biggest slap to your community. And having worked with various politicians over the years, and trust me, I have, whether neutral, democratic, republican. I've been with Governor Schwarzenegger, Congressman Issa, Senator Cruz, Representative Darby, Franks, others, all recently too. To local leaders like Supers and more, I've never seen this level of commu- lack of community relations in my career. For the development town by the same foundation that has built a nice-looking, yet out of compliance, crime-infested Emma's Landing development. It's shocking to read the word "safe place to call home." The city of Geneva is pleased with Emma's Landing. From a letter from March twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, to Kristen Moran at the Illinois Housing Authority, buyer city's leader. Not only did the community and local leaders not aware of this letter, many of you may not have been, which represents all of Geneva as writing that material. I'm blown away by the word "safe" and "pleased" since diving into what the city has been communicating to the housing authority. Yet Emma's Landing is is not safe or in compliance on a number of punchless items. We are not pleased. The question now is asked, what is safety to you? One hundred plus calls to the police for acts of domestic violence, murder and more? An absolute disgust of wear and tear, mold and more at the Burton Foundation Elgin development? That's not in compliance. And that's in record. If that is safe and in compliance to you, this city's standard for code enforcement and safety of good tax-paying businesses and residents is in harm's way. To have you say that the other day and it be recorded, our city council members are better informed today than they have ever been. In fact, our community is, is a flat-out lie. The community does not know about stuff. The lack of transparency is at an all-time sneaky low, such as a referendum where so many people did not know. Because you as a city did minimal amount of community engagement to inform them. You cross off the box to say you did include community engagement, yet it's the minimal requirement needed to skate skate by, but what you've done. For the police station near the neighborhoods affected, no one knew. Why do I know this? I had a chance to meet. And ask many in those neighborhoods, including the Southampton Corridor, which is high-traffic already and they're worried about more. I actually helped update them of the failed referen- uh referendum as well as the location of the project. Those people across the street did not know what was going on. For me, if I have a development across the street or rec- next door, I talk to them early-stage development. And I've seen that other with DOTs and other. And I have dear friends that are nearby who are one degree of separation from that impacted development. No discussion, no reach out. It's on, it's on the city's website and there, but you have a website that's, it's not Facebook. We do not go at it a thousand times per day. The Bur- the Burton Foundation Development Number Two, no one knows about until recent and people are ticked. And now it's, and it's now a busy topic and still the city has done nothing to listen or take the right path of community engagement. To hear about thoughts or outside comments on it if this, if best for the city. And maybe it's not, you know, we're we're not talking about affordable housing. We're talking about the Burton Foundation. Are they in compliance elsewhere? They're not even compliant in our own town. So now you're, you've got plans, you've got all this that we're uncovering. It's not fair to us. So. Sorry about that. This includes the developer. Instead, you are way advanced in the process that scares many. And you can't deny that given the level of detail, deep relationship staff and leader have with them and worse, they are so advanced. They want quotes to support the construction. And yes, they are asking for quotes. So it's not like they're not doing that. I'm up here because I sit. And I have sat on your side of the table, but also have sit at this podium on my own developments. I've deployed very successful com- community engagement plans, but I've also seen whether joint community engagement with a local and state agency, which I've had the opportunity to do. In my career or observe cities, towns, counties, DOTs deploy successful engagement plans for early, mid and late-stage projects. This city's process and efforts are sneaky, minimal to get what you you as a leader and staff want done, and this is crap. This city, unlike many cities, counties and state level, does not take the right community engagement plan and its neglect of good stewardship. For us in the community is disappointing to us, not just me, to us. We have great aldermen, departments in this city and great workers, public works, police right back there, fire, planning department staff. But I'm concerned by the few that hold a leash. Safety, compliance, lack of many items are going to make the city go downhill. With a leader and staff-level leaders moving sneaky fast in developments, where us in the community and ward leaders not able to collaborate or even hear what you are doing. Will push us, push us down the bad path. Please start listening to the community who are worried about safety. Please deploy the best efforts for code and compl- compliance enforcement, especially with a developer like the Burton Foundation. And plea- and please, you have to be transparent. Otherwise, the leaders we elect to support our staff leaders. And top-level leader can't do their job effectively. If that is not there, these great aldermen can't do their jobs with what. You've sneakily done behind the scenes. Be very smart with what you're doing, the Burton Foundation, foresight management especially. And we are now aware of what you've been doing and we are scared for Emma Part Two. And I appreciate you letting me speak. And I appreciate you let me speak from my heart. And I do speak for many of these people in here and I hope you can hear that candor from my voice. So, thank you all.
My name is Kathy Showalter. I'm not a real good speaker, but I just wanna take a few minutes to say. I have lived in Geneva, in Kane County, all but three years of my entire life, okay? Um I'm fearful of what our city is getting to look like. I have personal friends in Emma's Landing, been through a lot of ordeals with them. I'm fearful of what may happen to Duke and Lee's property. I'm not saying that Geneva does not need affordable housing. I just don't want it downtown Geneva. Um I have nine grandkids. I've raised three boys in the neighborhoods. And I fear that walking downtown Geneva with that monstrosity. Of what they're proposing to us. Will keep children and families from going downtown Geneva. I just wanna say, please think it over. Go through all the ramifications. What it will bring and what it will not bring to Geneva in that location. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm not dressed up, but I'm going through menopause and I'm hot. So, um. My name is Katie Lapatina. I live at four thirty South First Street. So I live right down at um South and and Route Thirty. First of all, I'm a little, you know, it takes a lot for people to come up here and speak. And it's a little bit intimidating, but we have sis and bro over here laughing and smirking. Um it's insulting, okay? Maybe you don't live on Third Street, maybe you don't live downtown, but we do, a lot of us do. And I'll be frank, we don't really want the ghetto, alright? You're talking about affordable housing for seniors, okay? What if grandma lets grandson and his friends come and stay for several weeks? Cause she feels like it. It's right off the train. So you're talking about affordable housing for seniors and we really know what's going on, don't we, Mister Burns? I don't know if you get a cut. I don't know what your deal is. Yeah, that's what people are saying. I don't know what your deal is. I don't know why anybody would want affordable housing on Third Street. Third Street has already taken a hit from COVID. Sis and bro still smirking, fine. Um Third Street's already taken a hit and you wanna put that down there? What do you think that's gonna do for the merchants? You think that's gonna bring business? I'm thinking it's gonna bring a lot of shoplifting. What do you think is gonna happen for kids that wanna go around and get ice cream? And you've got Emma's Landing Part Two on Third Street. Again, I'm all about helping people. I think it's great. And you know what? Domestic violence happens everywhere. Murders happen everywhere. A lot of that we can't control. This is something that we can actually control. I don't know why you would want that on Third Street. I don't think anybody else here does either. I don't think anybody else here does either. So, that's it.
Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening.
Hello, I'm Catherine Sandman. I live on Sunset Road, and I only learned about this like four days ago. And I think there was even a "for sale" sign on the Duke and Lee property as recent as like three, four weeks ago. Because I actually thought, hmm, I should look up the website and see what they're asking for that property. So I had no clue this was in the works. And I just find it outrageous that as you're driving into Geneva, and you turn the corner to go up Third Street, and you got the nice Geneva sign there, that we would put something like that at the gateway entrance to our wonderful Third Street shops and restaurants. Are these people going to be shopping at the shops? No. Are they going to be dining at the expensive restaurants? No. So why put it there? It's going to be a tremendous eyesore and a blot on our community. We pride ourselves, is the chamber in favor of this? All the merchants? I highly doubt it. So, I just had an opportunity to speak my piece.
Microphone's open. Not from there, you're not. Not from there, you're not. Come up, join us. Hold on, Michael, wait till you get to the podium. Thank you, we want to make sure we capture this.
My name is Michael Restivo. I live right here on 715 Meadows.
Hey, Michael.
My name is Michael Restivo. I live at 715 Meadows. And all of us want to know what you're going to do about this. You're, you're hearing the feedback. What is next? What's the next step? What are you going to do to get feedback from us?
Just want to make sure you hear it.
No, let me, let me be very clear, Michael. I don't have the authority to waive the rules of public comment. Alderperson Casarag, do you have a point of privilege?
No, I have a motion to offer. Offer we, given the accusations that have been thrown out tonight, that we suspend the rules and allow ourselves to respond to some of the feedback.
Robert's Rule of Orders requires that a motion to suspend the rules must be seconded. That motion is not debatable. It requires two-thirds of the members holding office to vote in favor of. That would be two-thirds of the council members. With that, Madam Clerk, on the motion to suspend the rules, please take the roll call.
Casarag?
Aye.
Malachi? Malachi? Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
The motion has been passed. We have suspended the rules. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak first before we dive in from the dais? Michael, we hear you.
I hope so.
Yes, sir, we hear.
I thought you were going to fight this.
Okay, Michael, 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 Michael. Okay. No, there's no, no. We didn't interfere with your comments, Michael. Please don't interfere with anyone else's, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're hearing us, and I hope you hear us.
We hear you. We do, of course, and I defer to anyone on the council who wishes to address any of the comments made. Ms. Lapatina?
Yes.
Ghetto?
Yep.
Wow. There are eight, it's not, it's not your turn, it's not your turn to speak, Ms. Lapatina. It's ours, thank you very much. There are 8,000 housing units in the city of Geneva, 8,000. 550 are quote "affordable" throughout the community, including downtown. Downtown Geneva is defined as Anderson Boulevard to East Side Drive, Stevens Street to the train station. We have affordable housing opportunities throughout this community. We are not at, what many of you probably know, the goal is to be at 10% for every community in the state of Illinois. We're at approximately 7.3%. We have dropped percentages because I think all of us can be proud of the fact that our EAV has risen rather dramatically over the years. Okay, that's a good thing. Estimated assessed valuation of property. I can't be any more clear. I've done so in my text messages with certain residents who have reached out to me. I've done so as best I can and as clear as I can. A concept plan for any development is not a formal plan, period. There is no formal plan submitted by the Burton Foundation, period. Concept plans take place all the time. And I have in front of me multiple letters that we call, that the industry calls, zoning determination letters that we send to developers all the time. We are requested by developers, or even business owners, and homeowners, to please on city letterhead, send us a zoning determination letter so that we know in advance as we pursue financing or additional opportunities, we have from the city a determination letter. The determination letter sent to the Burton Foundation was exactly that. Perfunctory is indeed what those letters are. Hundreds of letters over the years, whether it be Mr. Degroot, whether it be Mr. Busing, whether it be our Director of Economic Development, Kathleen Timoshenko, whether it be our Historic Preservation Planner, all the time. I understand that a quick purview of a zoning determination letter may send some people to assume that, that means the city supports, or the city has already quote "taken a position on." In a text exchange with a resident, actually two residents, they inquired about the process in general. Some of you may or may not be aware, but I think it's worth sharing, and I believe, believe me, I invite the council to interrupt. No council member, myself included, no Planning and Zoning Commission member, no Historic Preservation Commission member, can say prior to or upon receipt of a formal application for any development, whether they support it or don't. It's a violation of the due process as codified in the Illinois statute and of course, the city code of ordinances. And I'll give you an example of why. Many years ago, prior to the magic of television at the council meetings, there was a proposal for a fast-food restaurant in our community. And a comment made from the dais was less than appropriate. That council member was sued by the developer for violation of the due process, the objective consideration of a plan prior to it reaching this dais. That's a tough lesson to learn, but it's an important lesson to adhere to. There is no plan, no formal plan by the Burton Foundation to develop or construct senior housing at 609 South Third Street. We can, if you so choose, piece together part and parcel of certain letters and what have you, and then reach a conclusion that perhaps respectfully serves a particular narrative. But I don't know how much more clear I can be. There is no formal plan submitted by the Burton Foundation to develop that site for senior housing. Let's say, and this is in my exchange with residents, when and if such a plan would be submitted. It's first vetted by our professional staff, then it's posted on the website. It becomes public. If you have the alerts, you'll receive word of it. And that's when the exchange begins, whether it's emails, phone calls, you name it. All that information is collected. All that information is provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All that information is taken to heart based on how they wish to adjudicate the decision, and then ultimately recommended to the council for final approval or denial. That's it. It's as simple as that. It's as simple as that. Hundreds of such zoning determination letters have been and will likely continue to be sent to developers, prospective or otherwise, homeowners, those wishing to work on historic homes, new businesses that want to open. That is the process. It's not Geneva's process. It's every municipality's process. Alderperson Pashke?
Thank you for making that clarification. I, my understanding of some of what was said tonight was that there may be some confusion around the IDA process. And I was wondering if you could expound a little bit on clarifying the IDA process and why some of that might have been confusing or confused the issue for people.
Let me, let me address almost in reverse order a comment. And again, if anyone wants to chime in, chime in. Do you want to chime in? There's a reference made by Mr. Porter regarding an inquiry from Alderperson Bowring. Alderperson Bowring received an email from our friends at IDA, the Illinois Housing Development. Received a letter, yes, yes. Received a letter.
Received your letters.
Yes.
There's a letter from IDA.
No, there's a, no, Mr. Porter, you're incorrect, sir. She received a letter from the Illinois Housing Development Authority asking for, which is common practice, if elected officials wish to opine on and/or submit a letter of support. The inquiry was, is this helpful? We've never seen such a request before. So it struck us as kind of unusual as well. Hence, the response from Ms. Dawkins. Clear as crystal. Mr. Porter? Oh, I know you do, I've seen him too. But hold on for a second. You can refute if you'd like to. The way, the rules have been waived. Perfunctory has been a word that some like to trip themselves up on by intention or otherwise confusion. If David Degroot, Kathleen Timoshenko, Jackie Bowring, Matt Busing have to first consult with the entire city council as to whether or not a zoning determination letter can go out, the process comes to a halt. Their job responsibility is to state very factually the zoning parameters based on a request by a prospective developer, business owner, and what have you. That's how it's always worked. That's how it should work. Only when a formal proposal is submitted, only when a formal proposal is submitted, does it then become a public document for review and consideration by everybody who calls Geneva home. And quite frankly, as all of you know, even if you don't call Geneva home, you are allowed to, invited to, and welcome to speak about it. Zoning does not talk about people. It talks about land use. I have never heard from our code enforcement officer, despite the stories spun by a gentleman earlier, Mr. Primero, that Emma's Landing is quote "crime-infested," and, and, hold it, folks, folks. You okay over there, Michael? Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a. Good, good, don't. And, and he also asserted that there's mold all over the place.
That's the Elgin Development.
Well, see, and that's what's so interesting, because you reference Elgin. The last I checked, our responsibility is the 10 square miles of Geneva. So why would, what?
Same development, same company. And you look the other way. And yes, I've seen it. Have you knocked on doors and talked to people? Probably not. I have.
Oh, oh. Okay, Mr. Primero, thank you. In fact, I have been there.
You know my name. We've met many times on your, on.
Sheriff, could you please request that the audience refrain from speaking since it will not be recorded for the record?
If I mispronounce it, I apologize. Yes, in fact, I do know the residents of Emma's Landing. And tonight, I'm proud to wish Emma a happy 33rd birthday. I'm not here to talk politics, sir. I'm here to answer your questions. I'm here to answer questions, sir. No, you cannot. I'm not finished yet. Thank you. And then I will defer to the council, then whoever wishes to speak can speak. Again, I'm not finished yet, but thank you very much. To Michael's point and to other people's point, to correspondence with some of the residents of Sterling Manor and elsewhere, all of us are aware of the, the hurt, obviously. But what I believe cannot be done is to just point fingers and accuse everybody else of some sort of great manipulated conspiracy, when in fact, it's simply not true. It's simply not true. There is no formal submission for a development at 609 South Third Street. Now, I know that repeating that time and time again will do no good because several people, some people, perhaps a lot of people have already reached a certain conclusion. And that's fine. All I can do is be truthful to you. And you can take it as you see fit. My first phone call regarding this issue was a panic call, that who the hell would ever consider this being done? Explaining in great detail that there is no formal submission is helpful. And of course, as all of you know, it also piques the curiosity and interest in folks to maybe keep a closer eye on what is being submitted, what is being considered, concept plans floating around, all that, all that, and that's great. That's great. On a personal level, I take exception at the use of certain words. I think they're offensive, and they're very, very basic, basic grounds, they're offensive. We have men and women in this community and children who are struggling financially and otherwise. And to lump all those men, women, and children into a term that has been used tonight on several occasions because it satisfies some sort of narrative is a little bit upsetting. But in the spirit of public comment, you can say what you wish, and that's fine. Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. There was a lot, lot, a lot of notes that I took down. I, I looked through most of it, and I don't see violations. As you touched on, there are untold theoretical developments that come to the city. Things are thrown at staff all the time. They're counseled, and this is zoning. Some of them walk away, some of, some of them decide, I want to, I want to pursue doing this in Geneva. When they formally submit something, then, then we move ahead. That parcel is zoned downtown commercial mixed-use right now. There is a, correct me if I misstate something. There had been an approved plan under a previous owner. If someone wanted to come in and develop that plan, affordable or not, they could do that by right. Just walk up, build it. Because there is zoning, there is a plan that's been approved. We have a new owner. But anyone can purchase that property, and no one has to tell us that they're purchasing that property. To this particular developer, you know, their model is affordable housing. We cannot, if they have a compliant, physically compliant plan, if they present something physically compliant, and we willy-nilly deny them to be able to do that, they appeal to the state of Illinois. That takes our decision-making out of it entirely. It behooves us to work with any developer in any case. But going through this list of claims of backdoor things, I know I have not been. I have not been part of any conspiracy. I have, you can check my bank records. I have received no monies from any developer. I, I think we're getting way out over our skis in terms of how this goes. Uh, some years ago, Geneva, um, upped the bar for transparency, uh, on these types of projects. We doubled the radius for public notification. We, I believe now we have, where, uh, it was mandated that local or nearby residents get one notification. We do at least two notifications if there's development nearby. And it is, and it is wise for any municipality, when someone comes in looking at property, looking for development, they don't want their competition to know what they're doing. That's often explicitly asked to be confidential. But we don't go advertising everyone that walks up to the, uh, to our development planner. Because that's just the right thing to do. We'd be a, a very hostile community to any developer if we started throwing that information out prematurely. There's a lot that goes, that will go on. There will be, well, unless there's a narrow exception, there will be a public process somewhere along the line. But there is no plan given to the city for us to make public. Guess that's it for now.
Alder Person Mayor?
I think it would be useful to talk about the IDA process because it starts in February of each year and affordable projects are submitted to IDA during February. And then they go through a review process and that process ends in June when, uh, projects are determined whether or not they'll get 4% or 9% tax credits. So the letter of support in March was copied to all of the council. We were listed on the email. We were very aware that this had happened. Uh, there was nothing untoward happening there. And it was a letter of support for a company that just finished a housing project in Geneva that we did support. So I think that all of the energy around that should dissipate that we, we do know that that letter was sent out to IDA because that's a normal process that they go through for their vetting of projects every year. That does not mean it was submitted to the city of Geneva. It does mean that you can go on IDA's site and everything is public. So everything submitted to IDA each year is public information. And you can go onto their website and understand where projects are in their determination process. It was known that, that this project failed and was not awa, not awarded credits. So that was something that we, I looked up and saw that Tartesso was not selected for the tax credits. Nobody from the city was doing this because it wasn't in the city's domain yet. It was still in IDA. So when we reviewed the site plan again in October, you know, I've been of the position that this plan was approved before I joined council, but I watched the meeting and I reviewed the plans that were submitted by the previous developer for a market rate development of 54 units. And it was unanimously approved by the council at that time. And, uh, leaving the site plan approval open is in fact, a way to draw developers to town because that project was seen as desirable. At the end of 3rd Street, to have a mid-rise of residential, that's, that's what the city has been telling us they want. We have a strategic plan. It calls for housing. When we, when we approve housing that's not affordable, we get an uprise that, why isn't it affordable? We need affordable senior housing. I've heard it from many, many people. So I understand that that, that there is a part of the community that due to recent happenings at Emma's Landing, which were a tragedy, are energized by this. I wasn't smiling, I, during anybody's presentation. I was holding back because it is not true to say that, to, to develop big conspiracy theories here. This has been managed very well, in my opinion. And I'm on council and I don't, I don't buy into anything that there was underhanded things happening here. This is what we do. It's usually really boring and you all don't pay attention to us. But this is exciting because you don't like Burton Foundation. And because you don't want the ghetto and because you don't want, like, all the reasons that you've cited tonight. But if it was a market rate development, nobody would be here. So, um.
One moment, we gotta just ask, any other council members wish to speak? Alder Person Bowery?
I'd like to echo what's been stated by my colleagues tonight. Um, since I've been on council and I've watched years' worth of meetings before that, um, I've never experienced anything or seen anything other than above-board, transparent communication with the community. I would agree that it is always a challenge figuring out how to get information to the community in a way that they are interested in receiving it. Believe it or not, the city does work hard to disseminate information all the time. But people are inundated with information and a lot of the time, you know, people don't even click to open the alerts that they get from the city um, if they've signed up. Um, I mean, I know I signed up for a bunch of them when I joined council and I don't open every single one of them because sometimes I've already seen it and sometimes that one's just not high on my list. Um, that being said, I wanted to reiterate that, um, it is a state mandate that the city of Geneva work to increase affordable housing opportunities in Geneva. I personally think that that is a good mandate because I think everybody in our community deserves to have a place to live that will not bankrupt them financially. I've experienced times in my life where finances were very stretched in my family. And I think it's important to recognize that, as the mayor pointed out, we have affordable units spread throughout the city, not enough of them. And sometimes they disappear when people come in to do redevelopment. And that feels heartbreaking to me because I want Geneva to be a place for a wide variety of types of people, um, at different points in their life, with different financial means, different interests, different outlooks. That being said, I am absolutely a firm believer and advocate eh, of due process. I think if you watch our meetings, you will see that I sometimes irritate my colleagues by, uh, really wanting to make sure that we do follow our process and check all the boxes. Um, part of a due process is understanding how that process works. And it can be confusing. There is a, there is a learning curve. And it is the case that there are times when the community would like to have public input on something. And unfortunately, that's not the time for it. Like, that's, and, and we don't make up these processes. Most of these processes and, um, Mayor, you can correct me, or a city administrator who's also an attorney can correct me if I am mistaken. As a non-home rule community, the vast majority of what we do and how we do it is set out in state law. So if we do not follow due process, we are violating state law. We don't get to make it up. Is that accurate? So I do understand that the, there are strong feelings and opinions, um, particularly about this developer. I think it's important, if people can, to separate that from other issues, including housing density, including affordable housing, and including the process that the city of Geneva follows for zoning or for, um, approving, deliberating on whether or not to approve proposed developments. Again, I guess I, I, I feel confident that there's nothing I can say to convince people that there's not something untoward happening. Which is dismaying to me because I know that my colleagues and I, and especially our professional staff, work very, very hard to preserve what's wonderful about Geneva, to make it better and brighter for the future. And I have a lot of confidence in our staff that they are professional, that they are following the processes laid out in state law and the processes that are common within their professions. I will also echo what my colleague Alder Person Mayor said. A lot of what we do is fairly boring. Typically, we read a packet of several hundred pages before we come to these meetings and we've digested that information. And then a lot of the time, we don't even have a big debate because we just kind of all know that this is how, you know, you go about making sure that you have a budget so that you can repave your streets the next year or what have you. Um, anyway, I, I'm dismayed to hear that so many people, um, I guess are, are not able to see what I think are the genuine efforts at transparency made by, um, our city staff. Um, and I guess I would encourage everyone to, this is gonna sound eh, like a broken record, to visit the website, to sign up for alerts. Um, you'll, you'll maybe be bored by a lot of them because a lot of what a municipality does is kind of humdrum. But, uh, there's kind of some comfort in it being humdrum because, uh, I don't know, there's, there's, that is part of how things keep working. Somebody referenced at one point this evening, the referendum or the failed referendum. And I guess I just wanted to make a very short note about that. We, we had not gotten very far in the process of developing plans for how to fix the facilities, which by the way, continue to be breaking down. We just got notification today about a number of different failures in city buildings that we are meaning to take care of so that our employees have like safe places to work that have heat in the winter. Um, so I'm sorry that people have come away with the impression that there was anything underhanded or untoward in that process. But again, we got as far as contemplating putting a referendum on the ballot because we have great needs in our city facilities that we would like to address. Nothing had been decided beyond that and we postponed putting it on the referendum so that we could address some issues down the line. So, again, I think, I think unfortunately, if you start looking, I don't know, for, for some kind of exciting problems, um, perhaps you will find things that seem to indicate that to you. But I've not heard anything that I could piece together to even understand what exactly the complaint is from many folks in the room other than, um, stereotypes about what affordable housing is, which, uh, I do feel are pretty unfortunate. Um.
But, no, 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 but, 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 but with all due respect. Did any, did?
That's vetting a developer.
Hold on, hold, hold, hold on, hold, hold, hold on. Okay, thank you. Calm down. Calm down. Did anyone, anyone interrupt you when you spoke?
No, we're trying to be transparent. You're saying that we're.
No, 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 no. Sir, did I not allow you to say anything you wanted to say? Please extend the same courtesy to the council members, irrespective of how long it goes. If this is upsetting you because it's dragging on.
Excuse me? What's dragging on?
You said this is going on too long. Mrs. Lepatina. Well, that's your opinion. That's your opinion. The floor is yours, Alder Person Bowery. Nope. Not yet. Nope. Thank you.
Sorry to say, I lost my train of thought after being interrupted. Um, I will note for the public that this is a job that all of us do for essentially no compensation. We do it because we are interested in helping Geneva be the best place it can be. I understand that part of my job is to sit up here and listen to public comment. It would be really appreciated by me if you could refrain from insulting me while I do it. I think that's common courtesy. And if you expect that.
Mrs. Lepatina. Alder Person Bowery, the floor is yours.
I guess I don't feel that there's anything else I can add at this point that would be productive, but I appreciate having the floor.
Uh, for the record, ladies and gentlemen, those of you who have attended other council meetings or county meetings or state meetings or federal meetings, uh, there's often a timer. We don't do that here. Uh, I think, Ms. Lepatina, you stated very eloquently that sometimes you, there's a little anxiety in speaking in front of public, et cetera. That's why we don't have a timer that says you have two minutes to state your piece and then you have to end. But we extend that courtesy to everybody to at least have them be respected in that same vein. So with that, we're still at the dais. Anyone else at the dais?
Alder Person Kilburg. Just so you have a little understanding, the reference to, uh, my, uh, motion to, uh, amendment as it relates to the extension, I, it was, uh, offered in a sort of a satirical way because of the fact that, uh, from one year to two years, because of the fact that we visited this so often. I believe that the, uh, the plans were initially submitted and approved probably in, uh, in nineteen, or twenty, uh, twenty fifteen? Pardon me?
Twenty twenty or twenty twenty.
No, I meant the, the initial plans.
The initial site plan approval occurred sometime after twenty twenty.
It seems, it seems to me that was longer ago than that. But I know that this was, when it was brought to us, this was about the, the fifth time that we'd, uh, it'd come before the council to grant an extension, I believe. Fourth or fifth time. And, uh, I guess my patience was wearing out with the developer as it relates to, you know, when are you gonna get this project off dead center? And when, when's something going to happen there? Because the initial plans, uh, would have been quite different than what obviously we're discussing here this evening. But, uh, as it relates to, uh, uh, the plans that we're discussing here this evening, I think that it was not a topic of discussion at that meeting back in October when we, uh, we, uh, we addressed the extension. Or at least I don't recall anything as it relates to the potential developer, who the potential purchaser of the property was. But I guess my question now would be, what is the intention of the Burton Foundation now that they've actually acquired the property? And, uh, and the thing is, the type of business that they're in and, uh, the fact that they purchased the project, or, uh, the property, uh, I think that there, there's a lot to be learned. And obviously, uh, uh, my fellow, uh, council members tonight, uh, addressed some of that in the process, but I can see why, uh, there, there would be concerns and, uh, as it relates to some of the history and the protracted discussions that we had as it relates to the project that, uh, has been referenced tonight and the fact that it was a long process. It was a highly energized process. There was a lot of communication and a lot of, uh, uh, stress in the community as a result of it. I think that, uh, the fact that, uh, people usually wake up to some of these developments sort of late. The fact that uh, people usually wake up to some of these developments sort of late in the game. And uh, the fact that we need a lot of communication and a lot of transparency moving forward, I think is going to be critical. And obviously, the community's obviously engaged tonight and uh, uh, it'll be interesting to see where this moves and what direction.
So, just to clarify, the city council approved resolution, resolution twenty 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 one. Which granted site plan approval for the mixed use building, so that was the first approval, was in twenty twenty. And then every, and, and then every year thereafter, because the site plan approval is good for one year. Or, and as, if building permits have not been pulled. So that was the first year is approved, then you came back in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, so twenty twenty four was the fourth time.
Anyone else on the dais? Alder Person Kocarog.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I guess, uh. I, I just feel the need to reply to some of the more outrageous accusations that were out there, if you guys have. Uh, problems with the Burton Foundation, um, I've been meeting with residents. And you guys can contact them, you do not have to go through us, there is, you reach out to them. Talk to them, set up a meeting, uh, I mean, we have no control over them. After they've been put in place, I'm not aware of any code violations that I've heard of. Uh, and that, uh, otherwise, I'm not sure, you know, you ask, sir, what are we gonna do about it? I, I would say, well, what are you gonna do about it, instead of just coming to a meeting and complaining? But this isn't accomplishing anything because we can't tell Burton Foundation that they have to shut a. Uh, a development down, we can't tell them that they can't apply for a land use that's already been approved. That's called discrimination, you do not want your elected officials coming up here. And, and making decisions based on race, gender, ethnicity, or anything, or income level. Income level, my, my point is, it's all discrimination and I'm not gonna participate that and put. This is for elected officials, you understand that, that's what I'm saying, you guys can do whatever you want. We don't have the, the same option that you do, I'm not judging you. You can be who you wanna be, you can think who you wanna think, you can call it. Questionable activity and questionable people, um, but we don't have that luxury. We're elected, there are laws we have to follow, and the last thing you wanna read at a newspaper is that one of your older people is being sued. For interrupting the process and causing a bias towards or against any particular developer. And then now taxpayer monies are paying our legal fees, is that, would that make anybody help, happy? No, of course it wouldn't. So, don't take what I do or what we do up here as what you guys have to do. But you have to understand, we're in a different position than somebody else, we have rules to follow. There are laws of conduct in what we do up here and we wanna do it with honor and integrity. And without putting the city at risk, and so when you hear some of these things. You, you guys can say it all you want, if, if you're, if you're mad at Burton Foundation, then tell them. Tell them they need to get their stuff together if that's how you feel about it, no problem, but we are not allowed to intercept that. Process ahead of the, uh, of the time and the time when we do that is when we deliberate about a specific. Project that's been submitted to the city, we don't come up here and talk about any other development at all, anytime. Until it's been officially submitted to the city, I have never, ever said something on the dais about. A project that might be happening, I've only, and all of us have only talked about projects that are happening, that have been submitted. It's really important that those who have these concerns understand the process. Because that will lead you to the solution that you're looking for and the solution is not the city of Geneva. We cannot interfere in those, in that process. If you think there's something fishy going on, go to IDA, that's who takes care of those complaints. You did, and where did you get with them? Then go to the state of Illinois, how, how, and how did that go? I'll find out, is that, what does that mean? Okay, I guess, okay, interesting, I.
Uh, Alder Person Kocarog has the floor still, Alder Person Kocarog has the floor still.
If you may, Mayor, I'll, I'll let him talk.
Uh, after you're finished, then we'll turn it back to the audience.
Okay.
Or whoever wishes to speak from the dais.
I think that's all I have to say there, I, I do wanna say, I, you have to go on record on this. There is nothing illegal going on behind the scenes of the city of Geneva that me, or I dare say, any of the people on this dais are aware of. Ever, ever, in four years of doing this, nothing ever's happened like what Mark Porter alleges happened. And it is offensive to those who serve up here that you think you can just come up here and say. There's crazy stuff going on at the city and you expect us to, to what, I don't know. I, I feel like I need to put up a little bit of a fight, we don't do that, we don't do anything like that and never have, um. When affordable housing was first done, uh, in, in, in my time at Emma's Landing, there was a big push. Oh, you only do it in the corners of Geneva, you would never do that downtown Geneva, you would never do that in Eagle Brook. And now that we have it downtown, now everybody's scared about it and it's okay to be scared, I'm not saying that it's not. I'm not, again, I'm not judging anybody, but I am saying, this is what we have to do. This is what the people have told us that we need to do through a strategic plan advisory committee, which is significant for the city. And, um, and so. I have no idea if the project, you know, will come or not come or whatever, but I am in support of expanding affordable living. In the city of Geneva and remain open to ideas that are presented to us by developers, I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Anyone else on the dais, Alder Person Paskey, we'll get to the audience as well.
Thank you, um, so I don't have a lot to add, um, I am grateful for. The comments and sentiments shared by many of my colleagues, um, Alder Person Bruno, I think, made some very key points. I guess I can see how a lot of this can be confusing to people who don't regularly engage in this work. Um, when you're not getting the multiple hundred page packets read every weekend before a council meeting. I can understand that this stuff would come across to you as maybe being shady, maybe being underhanded, maybe there's more to it. Because you're not poring over two hundred plus pages of documents that are available if you want to read them anytime. Um, so I'm not here to critique anybody, I absolutely understand the confusion, I understand. Um, how assumptions could have been made mistakenly, um, I do think that a lot of. What was said was damaging and hurtful at a time when. We all really need to take a step back and think about our role in civic engagement. We all have a role to play in cooling temperatures, in being better people, in being better informed and better engaged. In a positive way that does not seek to destroy our community, I expect better from people. Um, but I am glad to hear that you all emphatically support affordable housing. So I look forward to your support when we get more proposals in the future because we are well behind the state mandate. And I am passionate about getting more affordable housing in our community. Um, I don't know if you noticed, but Lazarus House put out an update recently calling for donations. Twenty-five percent of their residents right now are children. Kane County has one percent or less vacancy rate. Rents are two thousand dollars a month or more, meaning many families can't afford to live where they work or anywhere near where they work. There are children getting on a school bus at a homeless shelter down the street from us, think about that. Last week, I was lucky to attend a conference. Um, in Los Angeles on ending unsheltered homelessness. Because that's a big part of the job that I do in my day job, this is what I do for fun at night. Somebody said something at that conference that really stuck with me, um, and I think that we all need to keep it in mind. And again, I'm glad that you all support affordable housing, because what they said was if you don't want affordable housing in your backyard. You better be ready for homelessness in your front yard. And we will see it, it's not far from us.
Anyone else on the dais? From the audience. Uh, at the microphone, yes, thank you very much.
I, I like how you, um, mentioned something about not wanting to destroy the community, isn't that what you said, or did I? Did I miss, did I, didn't you say something about that, that you don't wanna destroy the community? Didn't you, um, put several merchants on a blacklist when they didn't comply to your COVID stuff?
Actually, I'll go on record right now, I did not create that list, I did not post that list, I didn't even see that list. And I still have not seen that list, so that was a false accusation.
Okay, that's fair, I just wanted to ask, so, um, and separately, I think there's something that, a little clarification. Nobody here has a problem with affordable housing, we all like helping people. It's the Burton Foundation and what we've seen with Emma's Landing that we have a problem with, okay? It's what we've seen, there's them in the, the double homicide, and the eighth grader that beat the crap out of the seventh grader that put her in the hospital. Those happened like twelve months apart, so, yeah, if you look at it from our perspective, we're gonna have a problem with that. And we don't want it right there on Third Street at the heartbeat of our town, which very well could have an impact on Third Street. From the Burton Foundation, so you need to look at it from our perspective as well, because this is what we're seeing. We like affordable housing, I think it's very important, I'd love more diversity in Geneva. We also have to think about what's gonna affect our town and the, and the economy and, you know, we want people to come shopping here. You know, we don't want crime to go up on Third Street, right, and crime went up over by Emma's Landing because of Emma's Landing, so. We don't want in, increased crime on Third Street because we want people to come shopping and that's the heartbeat of our town. So I feel like there's this condescending feel going on from the council right now, like you guys don't like affordable housing and there's children, that's, we love helping children. We like affordable housing, we don't have a good taste in our mouth about Emma's Landing and the Burton Foundation, that's where we're going with this, so.
Mayor?
Uh, so, yes, uh, we're gonna, yes, yes, sir, welcome.
Hi, Tim Lepatina, four, uh, four thirty, South First Street, um, so, yeah, I echo a lot of what. My fellow townspeople are saying here, um, what was, I'm sorry, sir, what, what's your name, Alderman?
Kilburg.
I appreciate, I, I appreciate your, I appreciate your, your input. And really, it was the first time when you spoke that I had any feeling that, that anybody up here was listening. And had some type of empathy for what we are trying to explain, okay, not that you have all the answers. But at least there was some true empathy from you, so I, thank you, I appreciate that. What I heard from others was condescension, I heard. Platitude's that are really not worth anything, um, and all we're looking for, we're looking for, for guidance. We're looking to our elected leaders to get, to give us the insights, okay, we're not gonna read two hundred page documents. We're not gonna, we're not gonna read everything, maybe we'll get the alerts, but we are relying on you to give us the transparency. And, and let us know what is coming down the pike and we'd like to do it without the platitudes and without the. Uh, the talking down of, of adults here, so that's, that's what's impactful to me. As a significant taxpayer in this town, thank you.
Whoever else wishes, yes.
That thing's moving, so I'm gonna try to stay away from it, um, thanks, and a couple of things on, uh, affordable housing in the town. Geneva does very well of the fifty non-exempt cities, uh, we've done a great job, actually, I believe we're forty-seventh. Uh, and that's not like forty-seventh as in last, we're seven point three puts us in the top five for sure. Uh, as of the list that's on the IDA website, you guys agree, disagree, uh, seven point three. We go backwards with the new proposal that's on the table of a thirty-five unit development. Because you just approved forty-five with no affordable out on that, uh, towards Peck Road on the west edge of town, so we'll actually go backwards. There are other sites, including maybe, uh, hopefully we get a new police department, I, I believe that's a great thing. Be a great site because it has a lot of parking, it's a perfect location where you can do high density and it make it affordable. Other developers, and I believe you've all know this, because other developers inquire all the time, other developers have looked at this site. And given the fifty-one percent retail usage, it's not a viable site and the problem, the problem that you're gonna face when you look at it. And I've talked to three or four different people, including, we have other people in town, by the way, who do affordable housing, um, several of them. Who've actually come and knocked on my door and told me about it, um, when you look at that site and the, the, the issues with it. If you, if we sign on to this and allow an affordable housing project there and it is not economically viable for the developer and falls into disrepair. You're locked in for fifteen to twenty years, depending on the type of financing that they engage with for that specific use. So if it's not viable for one, it's probably not gonna be viable for another and, and, um. Just a, a couple of pieces on, on, on the Burton track record and other cities, it's not hard to find that, that they've got track records. When you're doing below market rate, even with the subsidies, it is really challenging to run those, they run them with for-profit entities, this is not a charity. Um, and, and, and it apparently pays pretty well, you can find all that, you can look at Charity Navigator and get the ratings and all those pieces. So when you look at some of the word parsing or some of the, you know, perceptions on confusion, I'm not really confused on how this all, how this all played out. There are approved plans for that site, you've extended them four or five times as Alderman Kilburg pointed out. So when we say there's no plans, there are approved plans that came with a zoning change for that site to downtown commercial mix. Uh, uh, mixed use development, correct? So there are approved plans and the reason that the process had to play out in the way that it did is, uh, knowing that this was gonna be. Going from sixty to fifty-four, requiring a variance for parking, significant variance for parking that would have to be approved. And going to thirty-five units with thirty parking spaces to handicap, two handicap spaces for an elderly with. Uh, retail first floor, again, none of this is really, this is why, uh, there's a, a handful of challenges. When you lay out an abbreviated process to IDA. And not abbreviated, but a different process than you would have to have, should those plans expire or, or were somebody to go try to develop that? From the ground up, when you lay out a process that explicitly states in the letter from Mr. DeGroot. That there would be no cross-examination of the developer and no public comment until approved. That is a very alarming process, that's how, those are not my words, it's in the email. It's a ninety-day process that he lays out in bullet point number three of his second edited letter, which strangely enough, was not in the first letter. And when I see an email, it's great that you found out on IDA's site that she did not get the, the financing, it's awesome, we, we look, and by the way, not all of it is public during the process. And not all of it can be foiled during the process, um, they object and say because it's, uh. Preliminary, whatever, that, that it's not all publicly accessible, it's, it's a, after the fact, it is all publicly accessible. But I would wager that there are other older people that did not know that she did not get the financing. And when you have a city employee writing to two other officials of the city, one an employee, one elected. And saying, I don't think we should inform the council until after we see if the extension goes through. They're withholding vital information that if I were in your shoes, I would like to know as I'm thinking about extending these plans. Because they, they painted a picture in that meeting, go back and watch the meeting on October seventh, if you don't recall it. And, and I did pick up on your satire and it was hilarious, his response, that, that the gentleman was squirming in his, in his pants, he didn't know what to do with it. If you had those facts in front of you and knew that at best they're gonna get the funding in June, if she gets the funding. At best it'll be in June, and if you. At best it'll be in June, and if you followed DeGroot's ninety-day process. Those plans may need to be extended yet again. So ironically, the two years would have been more practical in this case. But because you had this process laid out with approved plans, with zoning attached to those plans. That's the issue. As far as allegations, the only thing that I've alleged that I, I don't even know if it's illegal. I think it's a, uh, civil matter is the Open Meetings Act. And I didn't actually allege that anybody here did it. I alleged that based on the mayor's words, if he did this at, with the unanimous consent and direction of the council. That implies there was some sort of vote or direction you gave him. And, uh, it doesn't appear from any of the emails or any of the meeting notes that that happened. Because the letter on the twenty-fifth, there were two attachments. Not one, but two. Ms. Dawkins had received a letter from IDA, but also that was the first time that the full council was made aware of your email or your letter to IDA as well. And that's the letter, and that was sent on the twenty-seventh, and it was April tenth when that letter was then forwarded. And that's when the exchange with, uh, Ms. Bowring about it.
Just to clarify.
Neither of those attachments was actually included in the FOIA.
The dates of the letter sent, I think, are, are important.
Yeah, so there was an email sent on March twenty-fifth that you referenced, which notified the council of Burton Foundation applying to IDA. And that we sent a zoning letter, and then you're correct on the fifth, it said the city received the attached letter from IDA. And that we attached the letter from the mayor as well. So I think that's what you're referring to.
I'm sorry, you said on?
Yeah, so there, there was an email on the twenty-fifth and then again on the fifth of April.
The way it reads on your FOIA showing the tenth of April, yes, yes. The tenth of April, there was two, yes.
Correct.
Two letters. One from, one showing that you had received it from IDA, uh, IDHA. Um, SIC, I guess technically. Uh, and then the other was, appears to be the first time that communication to the council. It's, it says, I'm also attaching a letter sent to IDHA from the mayor as an example, if you wish to send a letter of support. These are so hard to read. I mean, obviously the formatting, and I know that's not on you, but that, so it shows that you received the letter and it shows that you sent the letter, you, you're forwarding the letter the mayor wrote. And then Ms. Bowring asked, are additional letters of support recommended or helpful? But the question on, and again, it's the Open Meetings Act. I don't think that's actually criminal. I think that's just a civil matter. Um, and I don't even know that there's any real penalties for it, was.
Could I offer a clarification?
Yes.
I have the email here. Um, so the email was to us, showing the mayor's letter was on March twenty-fifth. And the letter to IDA was dated March twenty-seventh. He had not sent it yet when he circulated it to us.
It's, she just confirmed it's April tenth in the FOIA request.
And I don't, there's so many different.
But the letter to IDA from Mayor Burns is March twenty-seventh dated. And it came to us for the first time on March twenty-fifth. It came before it was sent.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find.
Okay, I have it in my email because I don't get as many as you, probably.
That is not in the FOIA request, the twenty-fifth. There's no emails on the twenty-fifth. Um, the, there is.
There is an email on the twenty-fifth because there's the email that went to the council talking about the IDA application. You referenced that earlier yourself.
Yeah, that's the one, the, on the twenty-fifth, you, that's the one again where you did not include the attachments. The three twenty-five emails right here.
Good head.
Which is the Burton Foundation has submitted, sorry, yeah, and then the, the exchange with you and, and Bowring was on the, uh, on the, uh. So the, the letter was dated on the twenty-seventh, you sent it on the twenty-fifth. The prior council meeting was three eighteen and the one after was four one. And my question still on the floor is there was no, if it was done with the consent, the unanimous consent of the council, where was that document?
If I may, Mr. Porter?
Please.
Uh, and of course, I suspect that everyone in the audience has a copy of this or will soon receive.
No, they don't.
Pardon me?
No, they don't. Only, only Anne helped me with this printing.
Paragraph four of this letter, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, reads, and I quote. "The City of Geneva's Professional Staff Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council looks forward to conducting a comprehensive review of the Burton Foundation and Tartesso's proposal as it relates to our strategic plan, goals, objectives of pursuing housing, affordable housing, excuse me." There is nothing in this letter that says it's a done deal. There's nothing in this letter said we support. It references, like we do most of our, in fact, all of our correspondence, tying it back to the strategic plan. This is a perfunctory letter.
Yeah, you've said that twice, but Ms. Dawkins has never seen this request before, so I don't know how perfunctory it is. This, this Dawkins replied.
I've never seen the request from IDA asking for letters of support.
So the question.
Well, it, it went to the councils a whole. It's the first time I have seen.
The mayor stated he did it with your unanimous consent and direction.
Okay, Mr. Porter, once again, the reason why this is on City Council letterhead, because it reflects the City Council's adoption of the previous strategic plan. That's why this is on this letterhead. Upon receipt from the council, as Alder Person Mayor stated. I didn't receive any objections, but we choose this letter as opposed to.
Not receiving objection is not unanimous direction.
Just because we use this letterhead is important. So, I mean, you're, you're, you're entitled to your opinion, but.
You're parsing words.
No, 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 no. See, I almost used the word. I almost used your.
Unanimous direction.
Unanimous direction.
Unanimous consent and direction from the council.
Let me ask you a question. In the spirit, in the spirit of parsing, let me ask you a question. When David DeGroot, Kathleen Timoshenko, Matt Businger, Jackie. Sends out a zoning determination letter, is that not reflective of the council because they speak on behalf of the council? In terms of, and in the spirit of.
They're speaking only on the code, as you said earlier.
I'm sorry?
They're speaking only to the code, not to the people or the direction.
Exactly, and we represent the code through our actions and our policy direction.
Is it within your scope to, to provide support for a developer, knowing that that provides support?
No, 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 you didn't read it correctly. You didn't read it correctly. There's, no, it's not. Actually, it's not. I could not send a letter to anyone saying, dear Mr. Jones, I support the development of A, B, C, D.
Were you aware that that letter is a part of the process?
Absolutely, and it talks about zoning.
And that it gives them, and that it gives them, uh, favorable, favorability points in their application process.
Based on zoning.
Based on the support of the city.
Based on zoning support of the city.
You're getting, you're, it's.
No, 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 you, sir, you're trying, respectfully speaking. You, you're trying to, you're, you, you should be a tailor because you are sewing a story that fits well, but doesn't fit everything.
Now you're being insulting again.
No, 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 no.
I'm trying, I'm trying to keep it to the words of the four corners.
But you're not, you're not, I, I hear what you're saying. I simply disagree with it.
I know you disagree. You have to disagree because you were either dishonest or you didn't have the consent of the council and the direction of the council to do this.
When I send a letter, for example, to our friends at IDA.
How, how about this? How about we get the attachments that Ms., that Ms. Manning sent?
Why?
There's two attachments in her letter that you've refused to send. So we'd need.
Refused?
Yeah, we've asked multiple times, yeah. So we would like all of the attachments of all the emails and maybe it's just a flaw in the system, but many of them were left out.
Stored in the same place.
Okay, well, we've asked, so we, we've asked for those. There were two emails that she asked to be copied and pasted on the city letterhead. In the interest of transparency, just give us the attachments. That's what is in her email to Mr. DeGroot that he forwarded to you and your response was, hmm, call me. They're, they're your guys' emails. I'm, I'm not making that up.
No, I, I've seen them. I've seen, I've seen all the postings you've made.
I think they, they, they're cause for legitimate questions. Are, are those two emails? Then there is an email, uh, attachment that Ms. Manning sends back to Mr. DeGroot that results in the second revised, uh, letter. Where number three lays out the ninety-day process with no public comment. The question I would also ask is, given that the process is ultimately truncated by the extension. It doesn't seem fully transparent if any member of the public staff did not tell you that the buyer known to you for the project that was, yeah. Not formally submitted, but it's only not formally submitted because it didn't have to because it was already won approved for the site. So everything, all the wheels are in motion. For a site plan review is a, is a much abbreviated process. So, again, without public, without public comment, it's a very specific process and it was, only came out as the second. And the second version of the slider, that it, that, that's all that would be required without the public comment. So when you look at that. And you're making a significant change, not, not just in use, but now all the way to a thirty-five unit site, which was known before the October meeting. Uh, the thirty, that it was a change of thirty-five units. Had all of that been known by the council, would you not have asked different questions and, and asked if this was the same process? That's all I think is a fair question. And that's not for you, sir. That's just for everybody and for, and for the public ultimately.
And, and I would just clarify one thing. While the letter says site plan review, if once formal plans are submitted and they do not comply with the approved site plan, they have to start all over.
Correct, but they don't require new zoning, which came with the site.
They have to start all over. If they do not comply with the approved site plan, they have to start the process from the very beginning.
But he had done enough to say they do.
No, he had not.
Actually, there's.
What he, no, what he had seen on their concept, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean anything until the formal plans are actually submitted and then we do a formal review.
There were formal plans sent to Mr. DeGroot.
There was conceptual plan sent to Mr. DeGroot.
There was, there were like ten pages.
But if that's not what they submit at the time of application.
Well, they've, they've submitted a whole, they've submitted a whole other package. I know, uh.
We did not get a concept plan for the thirty-four units. That, that was what she said she reduced it to. We did not see those plans.
I got that attachment.
Okay.
So.
All right, I'm, I'm just saying, until.
That attachment came through, so she did submit that to DeGroot. In fact, I think he gave it to us.
And just to clarify, Mr. Porter, you referenced fifty-one percent commercial. It's actually six thousand square feet of the total development, so it's not fifty-one percent. It may have been just a scribbler or.
It says fifty-one percent in the, in, in the letter. So nonetheless, it's gotta be commercial with significant, there's significant variances on parking. And so when you look at all of these other pieces, aside from the affordable housing, there's other issues with the site that other people have legitimate concerns. I've not once raised any other, uh, in fact, I haven't raised a, a, a for or against the project. I'd love to see something there that generates tax, both income, uh, um, property taxes and sales tax revenue on the site. Because I think the city could always, always do well to generate revenue that doesn't come, you know, comes out of expendable money. But at the end of the day, you had this site and it was very specific to this site, the way this process can be run.
Well, actually, to any site, it has pre-approved plans.
Correct. And because it has the, we found something we agreed on, damn.
Mark the times, mark the times.
So, uh, because of that. The process can certainly appear even to those who are educated. Mr. Pomeo has a thousand times more experience in this, at this than I do. I've talked to other developers. All of them believe it lacks for transparency because of the fact that it was tried to be pushed through. And when you have the appearance of impropriety in an email saying, let's not inform the council of, about this, that is disturbing. The mere, the mere appearance of a conflict of interest is enough to cause a conflict of interest in law. So you have to be very careful about what we're doing and putting those things out there do not help the case of full transparency. Uh, I'll, I'll yield. If, if it's for, not for me, I need to sit down.
Ms. Bowring?
I would like to address two things. One. Please, please, yes, it is for this gentleman. If you would like to stay there, you may. You do not have to respond to me. The first thing is, because we have a strategic plan that we have adopted. That explicitly states it is a goal of the city to increase affordable housing in accordance with what is required by state law. I am extremely comfortable with saying that, given the discussions that we've had at our strategic planning meetings, which are open to the public, although very few people come to them. Yes, there was unanimous consent from the council. That if an affordable housing developer was interested in pursuing tax credits, the council would support that process being started. Because the only way we get dedicated affordable housing in Geneva, and by that I mean affordable housing that doesn't go away if it is redeveloped. Like affordable housing that is inspected and overseen by the state. The only way we get that is if a developer goes through the IDA process. So it is an explicitly stated goal of the city to pursue those. That doesn't mean we give anyone a blank check. That doesn't mean we disregard our process, but it means we want them to take the first step towards seeing if they get tax credits from IDA. They didn't. They may not in the future. They may apply again. They may not apply again. I don't know because it's not come before us. So I feel like the, uh, didn't write it down. Another point you brought up, um. Has to do with whether or not we were informed about something. So I've not read that email. My guess is that they didn't want to get our hopes up. We keep talking about what we can do to increase affordable housing in Geneva. We cannot require a developer that does not engage in affordable housing on their own to, to include units. We do not have anything that we have adopted as a city to require that. So we either have naturally affordable, sorry, naturally existing affordable housing. Which sometimes can be frankly really run down and because we're non-home rule, we do not have the ability to go in and make sure that those living conditions are adequate for the tenants. Um, and that, as I said, has the potential all the time to go away. So as some of my colleagues have stated, and I believe I stated before, I am a firm proponent of affordable housing. That does not mean I want it to be substandard. That does not mean I want it to be not a nice place to live, but in order to get it, you have to follow the process. And this is step one of the process is submitting to IDA to see if they get the tax credits. Because they can't make the numbers work without the tax credits and without the tax credits, we don't get the oversight from the state. So. Again, I hear what some of, and I don't want to attribute this to you, I hear what some of your other fellow community members are saying that they don't want to spend two hundred, you know, time reading through two hundred pages of stuff. I get that. I didn't do that before I was on council either. The problem is, if you don't understand the process, but then and then you find the process confusing and then you don't like the explanation for how the process works, I don't know what else to say. Because, excuse me, sir, I have not interrupted you, though I probably was tempted to.
I yielded to you actually because you want, I was talking.
You know what? I'm done speaking. Thank you.
I, I, I'm sorry, but you, so you, you're, Ms. Bowring, you're one of ten. I was asking, what, what I was asking was simply very technical on the Opens Me, Open Meeting Act. I'll drop it. If it doesn't bother anybody and knows, nobody's curious about it, then that's fine. You guys all have to answer yourselves first and foremost.
If, if there's an Open Meetings Act violation that anyone believes occurred?
We've filed a complaint, so they'll look into it. So it'll be, so it'll be taken care of. And we've, we've, we've opened it up and they'll, they'll deal, they'll deal with it. So.
Okay.
Um, that's, and again, I don't, I, I don't think it's anything more than a, a civil letter or something like that. So, um. But with respect to, uh. The, you know, IDA and all of those pieces, we're not, we're not confused on the process. We've, I've actually met with the CEO of AID and she educated me on how a lot of this work. I've learned a lot of great stuff about it. We're not confused on the process. The process that has played out here is unique because there was approved plan. I, I misspoke when I said to that site, to any site with approved plans, there is a unique process. The context of the email was not about your hopes because there are emails prior with, directly with Ms. Manning. Uh, with regards to council members having questions why these plans need to be extended to make this work. That was quickly followed up with, let's get on a phone call. Words to those effect. Again, those emails are out there. There was a, there's an entire, I, I hadn't intended to be here this late. There's an entire chain of events that led up to this. There are thousands of pages that we've been through. And trying to condense all of that to a few bullet points is challenging, but the back and forth directly with Mr. DeGroot and Ms. Manning. Yeah, I ask you all to just read it for yourselves. I'm certainly not gonna change your mind, ma'am. That's not my job. But it's out there for everybody to see. If everybody wants to FOIA them, great. We can make it easier by putting all on a website, do whatever, whatever makes sense. Just bring transparency to the process because at the end of the day, when you look at the words on the page, just keeping it to the four corners. It was very clear that they were avoiding creating further records. It was very clear that there were gonna be questions about why we're extending these again. And what it mattered to them if we were doing, and it says, by the way, if we're doing such a dramatic change. And it's because of the zoning. If you had to start over with the zoning having to be rechanged, it would be a very different process with public comment, correct?
That's correct. Public hearing, yes.
Public hearing and the ability to cross-examine.
That's a public hearing, yes.
Right, all of that, right, public hea, yes, public hearing versus public meeting was the parse.
Public hearing versus public comment.
Right. Well, there's a, he's, the planning and zonings are public meetings, but not public hearings.
No, it, it actually. No, actually, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission is officially charged by City Code reflective of Illinois statute to host the public hearings, which allows people to question, rebut, et cetera.
And why would there be no rebuttal in, in a site plan review?
Because a site plan review has already been approved through the original zoning based on the approved development.
So, it's unique to that situation.
No, it's, it's not unique to that situation, it's unique to any development situation, again, reflective of City Code, which is reflective of state statute.
So, there were questions being asked back and forth, there's a good back and forth, again, I'm happy to share the emails. If it changes your mind, great, if it doesn't, it doesn't, all we're asking for is, I think, everybody deserves a lot of transparency, and we've been through a lot of work looking at it, asking a lot of questions, sometimes we get answers, sometimes we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson, mayor?
I just wanna address one thing, um, when a site has been through the process and has a site plan approval, uh, and I said this during the meeting where we reviewed whether or not to approve this, that it's considered entitled, and it's therefore more valuable as a site, so the reason, part, well, most of the reason why I argued pretty ardently to extend the site plan was because uh, the city and the citizens that had been talking to me about my role on council were looking for development to ease the tax burden on citizens of Geneva. They also strongly support affordable housing. Now, regardless of that, the discussion was about the, entitling the site with a site plan approval. The original plans that were entitled, you can go back and look at those, there was no outrage, there was no, there was no flock of people coming in and saying, we can't have units on Third Street, this is too much density, this is a problem. Uh, it was approved, I wasn't part of council, I watched the video, I, I think that everybody should, um, and that is what we have extended. That is an entitled site, and it doesn't require all of the work that would be if it hadn't been reviewed for site plan approval. That's true, it's just a fact, like, that's how the process works. Um, that the Burton Foundation came forward, like I said, we all supported that, that letter went out, we all got it, nobody, nobody chimed in saying, hey, stop it, we don't wanna work with those people again. That wasn't part of anybody's mindset here, so, um, I can tell that the tide has turned on Burton because of uh, problems over the holidays that were tragic, and, um, I don't know of all the other incidents that's not in my purview to, uh, to review all of the, uh, issues that happen with domestic violence and other issues in the city. I know that in my ward, we have issues as well, in Eaglebrook, there's been issues, everywhere in town there are crime, there's crime that happens in this town. Um, I work in residential development, and I've worked in all, all levels of affordability to, from affordable to the most luxury homes in Chicago, everybody has problems. All, all people have issues, um, I'm, I can, I'd be happy to meet with people to talk to you about my experience in, uh, development. I, I don't think that anybody's gonna take me up on it, though, so, um, yeah, alright.
Before I recognize, uh, Alderperson Bruno, just a quick clarification, uh, an affordable housing development slash neighborhood in our community still pays property taxes. Alderperson Bruno.
Uh, thank you, mayor.
There's no tax being generated, that's not true. Pardon me?
I said, I said property tax and sales tax.
Okay, okay, that's. Got it.
Just wanted to touch on, uh, uh, one point, uh. Well, uh, wanted to touch on one point, um, uh, a lot of people are animated by, um, it being Burton Foundation. Alderperson Bowery, uh, pointed out, and then I don't think I'll, since this is public comment, I don't think I'll be slapped down by her attorney.
He's on the screen.
If, um, to give, if, if anyone wants the city to have the teeth to enforce what we can't enforce today, you should be proponents of home rule, which we can pursue, should the community want us to. Uh, normally, it's a population thing, but, uh, uh, home rule would give us tools throughout the city, affordable or not. That's it, thanks.
From the audience. Yes, sorry, my. Yes, please do, thank you, we wanna make sure it's captured.
Didn't realize what I was walking into tonight, I just, I own a store in Geneva on Third Street, we've going into our tenth year, and I have had a lot of customers ask me question, I, I, I just came tonight to find the facts, because you don't like a lot of rumors going around, and we know in the last year, lots of things with the chamber, you just, too many rumors, so, I promised I would come to get the facts, I'm still confused, um, cuz of all the stuff, so, the Burton people bought the, um, land, correct?
They currently have title to the land, that's correct.
Um, plans were approved, but they haven't been submitted yet.
No, yeah, the.
Right?
The plans were approved for Sumac.
Exactly.
The previous owners.
Okay.
The Burton Foundation now owns the land, has inquired about if they formally submit that quote, uh, I believe the language is substantially complies to, then what the process is.
Okay.
There's been no formal submit at all.
Okay, and they've owned it for a couple of years, and it keeps getting pushed back?
They've owned it since November twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four.
Just this, okay.
Yeah, so.
And they have a year to approve?
Your microphone, Amy.
Sorry.
They have a year after the site plan approval that we processed in October to submit plans and get approved.
Okay, and, um, is there any, um, will there be any formal? I don't, I'm not an attorney, or, I do retail, um, are y'all planning on asking, or can you, or is it even in your authority to ask the people of Geneva, other than to say, go on their website, cuz a lot of people don't go on the Geneva website um, for their opinions, or, and I don't mean to, or, at this point, it, it sounds like it, it might be out of your hands anyway, because it's, it's already sold, and if their a, approval is passed, um, that the affordable housing, which I'm, I am for, um, to a certain extent, um, are there plans for it to be properly vetted and different things like this, these are just questions coming from customers, and I'm like, I don't, I don't know, we're, we're not a resident of Geneva, my husband's family has been in the area for a hundred and fifty years, and we've done a ton of things in Geneva, got married here, you know, all these things, but I don't know all the facts, so I promised that I would come, I didn't know it was gonna be this late, to get the facts, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused, so, I can tell the customers that are coming in, that are, that want to know, to go to the Geneva website and look under what?
Well, there's nothing to look under, because there's no, there's no formal submit yet, there's a page on the Geneva's website that calls Development Projects.
Okay, okay.
The approved site plan is where.
Right, but that's for Sumac, not for.
Right, but that is all that's on the website for that property.
So, you'll never see anything currently that says, affordable senior housing, click here.
Okay.
Proposal, it's just not there, cuz it's not officially filed.
So, nothing is really official?
Correct, nothing's official.
That's basically the takeaway from the facts point of view.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you. Come on up, Kathy. Yes, you do. This is being broadcast, we wanna make sure we capture.
No, I forgot the question, Kevin.
Oh, forgive me, I didn't know that, okay.
Okay, um, I forgot the question, senior moment. Okay, so affordable housing, how do they take over such as Pepper Valley Apartments with a new owner? I got notification, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the new owners had submitted for Section Eight, is that true? Do you know that?
I, I have no clue.
Okay.
Now, we would not be notified.
That's what I'm asking, how does the city, or how do we as the citizens, are we able to be informed?
If, if there's a formal applica, uh, new owner, you and I go in and we buy the Pepper Valley Apartments.
Correct.
And we want to offer an affordable housing component, either all of it or part of it, we'd have to file an application with the Illinois Housing Development Authority, that's where we're, first step. The city isn't notified outright, by the way. And I can give you a couple examples, um, although this is public, because it was shared with us. We have had commercial developments in this community approved that include below market rate apartments, because they wanted to provide that for either A, their employees and/or their neighbor employees, and that's up to the private developer, period.
Okay.
We can't approve, we can't say no, we can't do anything, so my guess is, if in fact, there's anything germane to that, it would be on the Illinois Housing Development website, or of course, phone call.
So, we are not, I live in Pepper Valley, as you know.
Of course.
Many years, um, we have a homeowners association there, so the homeowners association does not notify the residents either, that.
I don't know.
They don't.
Cuz we have no authority over HOA.
They haven't, okay, so.
Uh, so, um, Section Eight housing gets thrown, it's thrown around a lot, it's actually, uh, it's not an Ida thing, and that's a federal level program.
Correct.
Um, so, no, it could be any house in the community could be rented at Section Eight uh, standard, like, there, there's housing vouchers, there's all sorts of programs that you probably have many people living around Geneva that have these vouchers, so, um, no, there's no notification program for surrounding areas, it's just, um, yeah, it, it's.
So.
And when you're a rent, when you're renting a building that has a certain number of people that live there, there are laws that have to be followed in what you can ask and what you can limit people to, and I believe that that is the rub between Burton and the community right now, is because they've rented to people on a qualification process that meets the compliance requirements of Ida, yet, people have gotten into the, into the rental units that, you know, turned out to be criminal.
One more question, then I'll sit. Percentage of Geneva currently, what are we at the percentage for, um, for affordable housing?
Seven point three percent.
Seven point three percent, which equates to approximately five hundred defined by the Chicago Metropolitan Agency on Planning and the Illinois Devout, Housing Development Authority as quote affordable.
Okay, and we are to raise that to ten percent, is that my understanding?
Yeah, the goal would be another three hundred plus, four hundred plus.
I, I wanna say something that, um, because I do work in the affordable housing, uh, space, um, everybody's interest here is actually appreciated, like, I think that, um, too often affordable housing gets pushed into areas where nobody will care, nobody will see what's happening, so, on, on a certain level, I appreciate, I don't appreciate name-calling, I don't appreciate name-calling.
I don't think that's what we're doing.
No, no, I, I did get called a name today, so I'm, like, that part of it, I could let go, but, um, I, I do appreciate people taking an interest in the community and in things that are happening, and by putting affordable units into our community, I believe that it's a good thing, that we can support those residents, uh, with our services and with our community uh, in a very productive way, that people that are shoved into the corners of abandoned fields in the south side of Chicago don't, don't have an opportunity.
I'm not against affordable housing, I, fortunate enough, I got a son who lives with me and his family, okay, community, we're together, it works, okay? He couldn't afford a house, sorry, I couldn't afford my house in Pepper Valley by myself.
Right.
So, we're together, um, so I am definitely with it, I just don't want it downtown Geneva.
But what if you were eligible in the future to live there, I mean, it would be great access to Third Street, I don't understa.
I don't believe it would be, I think there's better solutions, solutions for that area, move it elsewhere, that's all, thank you.
Uh, yes, of course, I think you've had your hand up a couple times, and forgive me for not noticing.
It's all about safety, and I think this is.
Your name is?
Oh, Katie O'Connor, I've lived here for forty years, I live in Pepper Valley, she's my crazy neighbor, but.
Yes, I, yes, I've seen the reports.
I love what Alderman, um, what'd you call yourself? I know, but you said another name, yeah.
No, he was joking.
Oh, I know, but he's really a good guy, I really appreciate what you said, because it made it more understanding to me, but I also work with a young gal who lives in Emma's Landing, and it has not been good there, and there have been a lot of problems, and it comes to me, it's a thing, it's a question of safety, and I'm very concerned if this it's, is it a fifty-four unit, or is it now a thirty-five unit that they're talking about?
There's no formal plan, so we really don't know.
But, but there's a lot of talk about that.
Yeah, there's a lot of talk about all sorts.
Okay, there's a lot of talk, but my whole issue is safety, and it's a big concern, and I think that's why a lot of people are here. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Dean.
Anyone else? Well, let's, let's get to the point here, what did you do?
I had a hip replacement Tuesday, so.
Fudge box, man, really?
I'm not exactly supposed to be here. If we only could have an ADA compliant building, it would be a lot easier to get in, um.
Reasonable accessibility.
I have a tremendous amount of empathy after this for people, this is temporary for me, some people will deal with this for a long time. Uh, it's amazing, uh, what, what walking the walk does, um, I, I, I violently agree, uh, I, I, I think you actually brought up Lazarus House earlier, um, it is a great model, by the way, nearby of what happens, and we have, we have other models of support nearby of what successfully has to happen if we're going to have affordable housing, it's not just about hitting the ten percent goal, it's not just about plopping people down somewhere, no different than if we, what's that? No, uh, what I, what I agree, what I think we have a very strong point of agreement is that you have to locate it in a very specific area where there are resources around it, Third Street is inexpensive. When we bring affordable housing into any park down here, we've solved one part of a very complicated puzzle for people who, who struggle and comply, because this is a very expensive place to live, we have to have uh, effective transportation for them, affordable transportation, shopping, all of those things nearby. When you bring in the elderly, you bring in other things like medical, et cetera, yes, you have the bus, not the most conven- convenient mode of transportation, you don't have a lot of stuff, the senior center's on the other side of town, which actually, Mr. DeGroot pointed the Burton Foundation to properties over, towards Stevens, that might be better suited for the project, right? Um, they would have to, I believe, start from the ground up with the zoning and all of that stuff, one was zoned properly, one wasn't. But it's about the entire ecosystem of things that has to happen around that, to make sure that it's a success. While we can't legislate behavior, and we can't legislate, we can't legislate opinions on all of those things, I, I mean, it doesn't work. But we do have to make sure that it's done in such a way that the city has the pieces around it, and ideally, more than just a reliance on the state, let's be honest, if we're reliant on the state for funding right now, and we are, uh, who's reliant on the federal government, and that could be a disaster. If we're totally reliant on the state and to, and don't have our own, whether it's private entities that find ways to support this, or public, public-private partnerships, whatever, we have to have other pieces of the puzzle for folks that we're gonna put in those places, or it's never gonna succeed. And the developer, to be honest, when they're losing money, they're gonna cut, I mean, that's the issue, and this is, again, this is not a, the, the foundation that gets the grants to build it is a not-for-profit, but if you look as, and I'm sure, most of these other. But if you look as, and I'm su- there are, most of these other entities that do this are not different. I've looked at a bunch of them, they're not different than the Burton Foundation. It's a not-for-profit and a bunch of for-profit entities. Nobody's doing this for free. They're doing it for a profit. I shouldn't say nobody. There are charities that do it, there are religious affiliated and non-governmental organizations that do it that are really focused on just making sure it's sustainable, et cetera. When you have a for-profit sub- bunch of subsidiaries, if it's not working, they're gonna cut, or they're gonna cut corners, and then we're left with a significant problem at a very substantial corner in town. So I just think that we have to focus on all of the, all of the facets of the situation beyond just the building of the building, because there's way more to it. In order for it to be successful, and look to other cities that have models around us.
Alder Person Kusarak?
Uh, if I could make a, a suggestion that, um, I don't want to cut anybody off, I've heard we think we've heard a lot, but we do have a whole nother meeting to get done before ten o'clock, maybe.
If anyone else wishes to speak? Well, you're welcome to do so. We'll move on to new business. Onto new business from the dais, from the council members. Alder Person Pashki.
I almost forgot about this, but don't want to forget to highlight the Geneva High School choirs that returned last night from a successful tour to Europe. They got to tour both London and Paris, um, over the last week performing at some incredible locations for large audiences. The audience in Paris actually included friends of ours from our partner city Quasi outside of Paris, so that was exciting for them to get to see some of the kids from our city. And they got to experience local and well-known sights. I did hear that there was gasping at the site of the Mona Lisa. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the school and their choir teacher, Mrs. Heinrich, for organizing. Um, and to the students for being good ambassadors of our city while abroad. Go choirs.
Were they gasping because the Mona Lisa's so small, or they? Smaller.
I didn't ask for more clarification, there was just a gasp, so that was good.
Anyone else? Alder Person Mayor?
I just wanted to share the sad news that, um, Roger Peresator, who was a much-loved teacher for Harrison Street School, passed uh yesterday, and, um, you know. Classmates of mine have reached out and expressed their condolences because he really was a favorite teacher of almost every person that had him, and services are this Saturday at Malone's.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alder Person Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to make a request of a, a future presentation from the Aurora CBB as to what the marketing plan for Geneva will be. I think it's appropriate that we're approving tonight all of the festivals for the next year, and given that, uh, we're now four months into the Aurora CBB uh contract, and time was of the essence when we approved it, that they were working on their strategic plan. I think it would make sense that they come out and say, here's what our strategic plan is, here's what it looks like for Geneva. Uh, we also have forty percent of the funding, which was going to be for a Geneva-specific marketing plan. I think it would be nice for them to appro- show us what that entails, or what they're going to do for Geneva. And I had a couple of observations. I went to the Aurora CBB website today and saw that they list one Geneva hotel on its places to stay, places to stay icon, and you hit that button and it comes up, the Harrington. We have three hotels in Geneva, so it seems to me four months in, we ought to be updating that and getting all of our places to stay up there. Uh, the restaurants, they list thirteen. It appears that eight of them are active restaurants, and in fact, the Geneva Winery Tasting Room. They show a picture of the Third Street facility, and the restaurant is two North Brundage Road in Albert. So if someone is going to that website and showing up, they're going to the wrong place. So it seems like there are some bugs to work out, and I think soon it would be nice to have them come out and say, here's what we're doing, here's what the program's gonna look like, here's how you can expect the website to be updated. So if, uh, if I can get two other alderpeople to agree with me, I think that we can re- formally request that that be presented to us.
Yeah.
I'd support that.
Not even nec- not even necessary for a formal vote, but absolutely. You got it, you got it. Well, anyone else? New business? Otherwise, Derek, oh, Mr. Kilbert?
No, I just recognize the, uh, Geneva Boys Basketball Team that won their regional and are advancing to the sectional. They'll be playing at seven o'clock in St. Charles, uh, at the East Gymnasium, uh, at seven o'clock versus Sweetmoreville South, who's a conference, uh, member that we've beaten twice, so, uh, we wish them the be- best of luck as they try to proceed uh on to, uh, hopefully the state tournament.
That's a good rivalry. Anyone else? How about a motion to adjourn the city council meeting? Okay, Kusarak makes the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. We're adjourned, folks. We'll just take a forty-five minute break until the committee of the whole meeting.
Sorry. I thought I was sitting it too hard. Um, I'd like to call the, uh, call the order, the committee of the whole meeting from Monday, March third, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, I'm Alderman, Richard Marks, Alderman right now, the second ward along with Alder Person Kusarak. Let it be noted that all of the Alder Person, all of the committee of the whole is, is present with one um Alder Person Malek joining us, um, by, um phone and conference, so, that be said. I need a motion to approve the committee of the whole minutes from February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, second by Pas- Alder Person Pashki. Any comments or question? All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, both passes unanimously. We will move to the items of business, because I know staff has been sitting here for a nice short meeting tonight for, for, for these few items. We'll try to get through it quickly. Item three A is considered draft resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Tracy and Ed Construction, Inc. for replacement of trench drains in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, second by Pas- Alder Person Pashki again. Your, your show.
Okay, so, uh, the trench drains at the Public Works Building are at various stages of failure from thirty-plus years of salt-related corrosion in the areas where winter maintenance fleet is parked. A public bid was held to request unit pricing for the trench drain replacement, including all materials and labor needed to remove the existing failed trench drains and replace with new, including adjacent concrete. Uh, three bids were received. The lowest bid was submitted by Tracy and Ed Construction in the amount of sixteen, six hundred and fifteen dollars per linear foot. The recommendation this evening is to replace as much of the deteriorated trench drains as can be accommodated with a two hundred and forty thousand dollar grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. Um, I would note that the project won't start until, uh, we have the final approvals from the state. I did get notice last week. We've been awarded the grant, we're just waiting for it to go through the state's process to actually release the dollars, and I'm told there's just one more hurdle, uh, so we should be getting that any day now, so. Again, we won't start the project until we know that the money has actually been released. Uh, with us this evening, we do have our facilities manager, Adams, if you have any questions.
I, Alder Person Mayor?
Have we used Tracy and Ed before?
Uh, we have not.
Have we vetted them thoroughly?
I have checked their references. They have done government work for Village of Addison and several other municipalities scattered around the Chicago suburbs.
They're a general contractor?
Um, they're a concrete sewer and water primarily.
So they have a plumbing license?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I guess I'll take it, uh, we have a motion on the floor. All all in favor of the, um, contract execution with Tracy and Ed, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item three B is recommend approval resolution authorizing the purchase of portable radios for Public Works and Geneva Emergency Management Agency in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. Do I have a motion? Second, by Mayor, second by Alder Person Kusarak.
Okay, so for your consideration is a request to purchase portable radios and necessary accessories for Public Works and GMA. The current radio system is over fifty years old and is a VHF line-of-sight simplex system that has reached the end of its useful life for a two-way radio. The recommended purchases will operate on the Starcom twenty-one network, which the police and fire departments have successfully used since twenty eighteen. This change will result, uh, will restore a robust interoperable with police and fire and surrounding Starcom agencies communications network that will increase personnel safety, accountability, and productivity. The cost of purchasing the radios to operate on the Starcom network is significantly less than the cost of building a replacement network. The recommended equipment will be purchased from Motorola Solutions via the State of Illinois Starcom twenty-one sole source contract and supported by United Radio Communications, Inc. of Bridgeview, Illinois. And we get double duty here tonight. We have both Chief Antonori and Director Babica, who can answer any questions you'd like to ask about radios.
Are there?
Or none.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, item three C is considered draft resolution authorizing the purchase of replacement vehicles up to the budgeted amount of through Sourcewell or other joint purchasing agreement. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alder Person Mayor, second by Alder Person Bruno.
Okay, uh, so the fiscal year budget has funds allocated for the replacement of vehicles in the capital equipment, electric, and water and wastewater funds um in the amount of one million ninety-five thousand dollars. One million ninety-five, okay. This includes two single axle dumps with wing plows, two one-ton vehicles, a locator vehicle, and a utility truck. I would note there's other vehicles in the budget too, but these are the ones we're talking about this evening. As order banks open for a very short period, the request is for preapproval to order vehicles up to the budgeted amount. Should any purchase exceed the budgeted amount, additional approvals from the city council would be needed prior to proceeding. Vehicles that meet the City of Geneva specifications would be purchased through Sourcewell or another joint purchasing agreement. And I blame, the whole reason for this meeting going so long this evening is because our new employee is here, and you can welcome him to the podium with any questions you might have, uh, Superintendent Javid.
Alder Person Mayor, you have a question?
I do. So when do we become aware of the prices that we'll pay on Sourcewell, like?
Prior to the purchase of the vehicle.
So is there like a very small window when you know the price that you'll be paying, or?
When they're quoted out, typically what happens is the, the vendors give us the price right up front, so we will know before we purchase the vehicle.
But we don't know now what each one costs, right? Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Ald- Ald- Alder Person Kilbert?
Do we have any lead time on these deliveries? Are, are there any that seem to be at issue?
Uh, I don't know at this time.
Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously. We are on item three D, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a profession, professional service agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick for water main construction engineering services in an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mayor, second by, second by Kusarak.
Okay, so fiscal year twenty-six includes three water main replacement projects, Division Street, Anderson Boulevard, and Delnor Health and Fitness Center. Construction engineering services are needed to ensure the water main is installed properly. Coordinate the construction with affected property owners, verify the construction layout, produce as-built drawings, and review pay applications. Staff has negotiated an agreement with HLR to perform construction engineering services for the three replacement projects. Um, HLR has performed construction engineering services for the Dunston Sunset Road Water Main Replacement in twenty eighteen, and they performed the design engineering services for Anderson Boulevard and Delnor. Staff has been satisfied with their work. With us this evening, we do have Superintendent Van Gescam, and we also have Randy Newkirk from HLR, if you have any additional questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, do we have any other public comment tonight? No? Well, I'm just, you know, they're citizens too. Fair enough, they are citizens, so that's fair enough. No public comment. Um, any new business from the, um, committee of the whole members? Hearing none, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is a motion for adjournment. Do I have? I think Alder Person Swanson got that one. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned.